It's that time. We'll call to order the Salina Planning Commission meeting for September 3, 2019. We'll start with the approval of minutes.
I approve the minutes from the August 20 meeting.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On to new business. Do we have any new business?
New business would be the public hearing items that we have for you under heading number three. And so, items 3.1 and 3.2 are both quasi judicial matters. And so, for the benefit of the board, we have the, on page three of your agenda is the order for addressing the Planning Commission. So, on items 3.1A and B, 3.2A and B, we will follow that format where we'll determine if the applicant's present. We'll have a presentation by staff, then we'll receive comments from the applicant, we'll have comments from interested citizens, we'll have any additional comments by the applicant or citizens that the chair deems appropriate, and then the chair can close off public comment at that point. So, the first two items are companion items, and they are an application filed by Jones Gillum Renz Architects on behalf of Kansas Wesleyan University. And that request is for an amendment of the future land use map of the comprehensive plan to show property on the north side of Claflin and the south side of Kerwin as public semi-public land uses. So, John, if we could get the focus on the Kansas Wesleyan properties and start with So, just for the benefit of the commission, the, over a period of time, Kansas Wesleyan University has been making some strategic acquisitions of property outside the core of their campus. And so, this yellow map represents properties that are owned by Kansas Wesleyan University either as part of their core campus or on the perimeter of their campus. And so, this is Claflin Avenue here, and the properties we are discussing are up in this area here. And we are discussing this property here, but at the time of this map being prepared, this property was under the ownership of the Salina Regional Health Foundation and not yet transferred to Kansas Wesleyan. So, John, if you could go to the future land use map. This is the application that we'll be discussing, which is M19-9. And this deals with the future land use of these properties. And the properties that we're discussing are these properties right here that are shown presently as part of a urban residential neighborhood. And so, our future land use map was adopted in 2010 and was based on ownership and land use patterns in place at that time. We have summarized for you that the land use map is not intended to be static or written in stone. There may be circumstances where land use or development goals have changed, and amendments to the land use map may be appropriate to accommodate development that furthers the plan vision or other goals in the plan. So, the primary uses that are allowed in urban residential areas are single-family and multifamily housing. And we do have a land use category for public and semi-public facilities, and those are for governmental uses, medical facilities, schools, libraries, places of worship, public safety facilities. And so, the majority of the Kansas Wesleyan campus, as you can see, is designated for public or semi-public use. And there's a vacant building at 135 East Claflin, and that property is right here, and it's currently zoned R2 residential. The Salina Regional Health Center is in the process of transferring ownership of that property to Kansas Wesleyan University to convert it to a building to house a nursing school facility. The building would have several classrooms, offices, a learning lab. The nursing school is not permitted under the current zoning classification. So, as a, as a support to a companion item which follows next, item 3.1B, an application has been filed to amend the future land use map to show this, these properties as a future public semi-public land use. And the applicant indicates that the map amendment is justified by changes in the community and that Kansas Wesleyan is needing to expand its campus programs and working to acquire a suitable facility to operate their nursing degree program. The educational uses like Kansas Wesleyan are considered to be public semi-public land uses, not residential uses. The urban residential land use classification doesn't list educational institutions or college campuses as appropriate land uses, but the public semi-public land use category does. The proposed change in land use would allow for expansion of Kansas Wesleyan's campus to better serve the public by allowing them to locate their nursing degree program in a vacant, unutilized building. There shouldn't be any negative impact to the surrounding neighborhood due to this change because the use proposed in the building is very similar to what it was previously used for, and that building has been used for that particular use since 1956. The other thing I would point out for the Planning Commission, and it's in Salina's strategic plan, it says that Salina will be supportive of lifelong learning through all forms of education, including elementary and secondary education, higher education, and vocational technical training. Special initiative will be taken to advance the presence and community impact of post-secondary education. So, staff believes that this land use change would advance both the presence and the community impact of Kansas Wesleyan University. So, we have identified three alternatives for you. One would be to reaffirm the existing plan and make no changes to the land use boundaries. The other choice would be to recommend that the map be amended to show the properties as future public semi-public. Or, the other would be to change it for the Claflin properties only and not for the Kerwin properties, if you see the Kerwin properties as still being viable for future urban residential use. So, as we reminded you at the beginning, our future land use map is a guide, but it should not predetermine land use for any one site or location. Kansas Wesleyan is continuing to grow and expand their educational programs to better serve their students in the community, and the proposed change should not have any impacts that are negative for the surrounding neighborhood. So, for that reason, staff believes an amendment to the future land use designation for these properties can be justified, and we would recommend alternative number two. Again, the proposal is to take this area here, which defines their core campus, and expand it up to include these properties here. And I do believe, John, that we do have a campus aerial map that we can show the commission. So, we may want to zoom in on that area, John, at Claflin and 4th Street. So, the area we're discussing, it consists of a parking lot here, a vacant clinic building here, the president's residence here, and associated side yard areas with that. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions you might have about the comprehensive plan or the land use designation for this area. But at the time that the plan was adopted in 2010, that was still a functioning privately-owned clinic, and there wasn't any reason to, at the time, to expand the campus land use area north of Claflin, but now circumstances have changed.
Does the college own any other property in that block?
If you want to go back to the ownership map, John.
The way I'm asking is maybe we should just include all of their land into the land use map at this time.
At the present time, the properties, except for the maintenance facility, the properties along 9th Street are primarily still being used for commercial purposes and revenue-generating purposes. So, we think that for now, this is an appropriate boundary, and so, what we're, this is already shown as public semi-public, this is shown as public semi-public, this is shown as public semi-public, this would add that, these are private residences, this is University United Methodist Church, and we think it would be premature at this time till there's redevelopment plans for these properties to show those as semi-public or public because they're still being used for commercial purposes.
I guess just to clarify, the land that's being transferred, we, we're including that in our change?
Yes. We do have, don't we have, John, an aerial photo or some vicinity map that shows the request area? Okay, so, this is, again, what Kansas Wesleyan owns. This is, the, this property that's colored here in yellow is the property we're discussing changing the future land use designation of all of this and this on Kerwin.
Is there a representative here for the university?
My name's Charles Renz with Jones Gillum Renz Architects. We're working with Kansas Wesleyan on, on this project and requested this, and made this request. We did talk about the land use to the, to the west, all the other properties that they own. We are working on master planning and would prefer to come back at a time when we have a better idea what the development right there is going to be, so we're really not prepared to, to make a request for those. Of course, you know, Dean did a good job of explaining what this is. It's very beneficial to the community, to Kansas Wesleyan with the growth of the nursing program, very important to them. Part of that space they have there, the first one is the, the yellow space furthest west is actually the parking lot, existing parking lot. They do have a shared parking agreement with the, with the church right now, so they, that's a shared use. And then, the question on the north, the gold property to the north, that's actually the, the one house that remains over there is the president's house, so that is owned and used by Kansas Wesleyan. So, if you have any other questions for me, I'm happy to try to answer, or Matt Thompson from KWU is here as well, so.
Any questions?
Oh, oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes. When we filed for the application, Kansas Wesleyan was not in ownership of the building. That has gone through, so they are formerly the, the owners of the property now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from citizens?
I do have a question.
Could I get you to go up to the podium, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I need your name and address first, please, just for the record. My name is Janet Shepherd, and I live at 110 East Kerwin, which is four, three houses away from the land development that they're looking for. Okay, our big question is, is this going to affect our property as well, or is this going to be something that may change down the road?
This, everything here that's shown in purple is Kansas Wesleyan property and shown as intended for future college campus use. They're proposing to expand that to this, basically turn this to the same color. Everything here would be unchanged as far as zoning or future land use. This would still be anticipated as, as private residential property and the church.
Right.
And so, the only thing we're talking about is property actually currently owned and under the control of Kansas Wesleyan.
Okay, that's what we wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, again, on page seven of this report, we've outlined three alternatives. One would be to make no changes to the current land use boundary. Second one would be to change the land use map to incorporate both the Kerwin and the Claflin properties into public semi-public land use. And the third option would include the Claflin Avenue properties but exclude the Kerwin Avenue property, if you see that as a, an important distinction. But our, our recommendation would be option two, which would be to amend the map to show everything highlighted in yellow there as part of the public semi-public land area.
Any additional comments or questions, or?
Ready for a motion?
I think so.
Regarding application, M19-9, recommended the city commission that the future land use map in the Salina Comprehensive Plan be amended to show the subject properties as future public semi-public. Period.
It's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay.
So, that is the general or future big picture. The item 3.1B is a companion item that gets into the more specifics of the zoning and the land use regulation that would apply. So, John, if you could go to the zoning request area map, please. So, on this aerial photo outlined in blue is the, are the properties that are the subject of this application to change the zoning to university district. And there's a whole combination of, of zoning classifications that we have in place. And so, this is a parking lot, this is a vacant clinic building, this is the president's residence, and then this is a lot separate from that that would be incorporated into that site. So, you'll see reference in our staff report to four tracks. And I think we, we have a zoning map, do we not, John, that shows what everything is So, for the benefit of those in the audience and planning commissioners, this is United Methodist Church, this is a parking lot area, the R2 represents what the clinic, and this represents the president's residence there. So, the application is to take property that today is zoned R1, R2, and R3 residential and use for surface parking lot, a former medical clinic, and a single-family residence, and zone all that to university district consistent with the area that you see there that's, that's colored in blue. And so, the particular tracks that we're talking about are 126 East Kerwin, which is here, a vacant track that had a house demolished in 2017. There's a single-family dwelling here that's used as the president's residence. That house was constructed in 1935. There is surface parking lots at 117 East Claflin that the Planning Commission approved in 2006. And there's a former Salina clinic building on the corner of 4th and Claflin, and that was, building was constructed in 1956 and has been used as a medical clinic of some type since then. In 1977, when the city was comprehensively rezoned and remapped, the north side of Claflin was zoned residential due to the presence of the church and some existing houses. The Planning Commission didn't want to spot zone the clinic, so it was zoned R2. That R2 designation made it a non-conforming use. So, as we noted, at the time we wrote our report, the Salina Regional Health Center was in the process of transferring ownership to Kansas Wesleyan. That has now occurred. So, Kansas Wesleyan is the owner of all that property, including the former clinic building, and they would like to rezone all of this property to their U University District in order to conform with the zoning of the remainder of their campus. And so, Jones Gillum Renz Architects has submitted this application on behalf of Kansas Wesleyan to rezone those noted properties from single-family residential and multifamily residential to university district. We've summarized some of the basic requirements of the university district. As we noted, the university district is a zone that is designed to give the university-oriented functions more flexibility than they would have if located in a residential district. So, we think that the residential zoning will give Kansas Wesleyan more flexibility to advance their educational mission than if we retain the existing residential zoning. So, the university district is designed to accommodate the kind of diverse uses that are associated with a college campus. One thing we would note is that the university district is exempt from the formula of our front yard landscaping regulations, and that is under the rationale that by their very nature, college campuses already incorporate landscaping into their campus setting. So, if this request is approved, there would be no minimum landscape requirements for the Kansas Wesleyan property under the U District designation, but this commission has, in the past, granted a landscape award to Kansas Wesleyan for work they did on their, their main campus. So, we think that they will be consistent with how they've developed other parts of their campus. As we noted, the current zoning of these properties don't allow for university-related uses and functions. The residential zoning is more restrictive than what the university district would allow, and that would particularly apply to the nursing degree program, which requires a facility with classrooms, offices, and learning labs, and having the nursing school zone the same as the rest of the campus simply makes sense. So, we believe that the vacant medical clinic is more suitable for continued medical-related use than for conversion to residential use, and the R2 zoning inhibits what Kansas Wesleyan's trying to accomplish. So, even though that property is zoned R2, given the historic use of the property and the fact that the nursing school will operate in a manner very similar to the previous clinic, we don't think that the zoning change is, is going to be impactful on neighboring property owners. And there's not going to be, there may be an addition to the property, but the use of the property will be nearly identical to what it's historically been used for, and the zoning would be consistent with what exists across the street on the south side of Claflin. All these properties are fully built out and developed, so there shouldn't be any impact on public utilities or services or schools. All the needed utility infrastructure and drainage infrastructure is in place. And so, as far as streets and traffic, Claflin Avenue is the most heavily-used adjacent street, but Santa Fe and Cloud Street are the neighborhood streets that carry the greatest amount of traffic. There's also a east-west alley that runs between Claflin and Kerwin. So, again, the proposed uses are nearly identical to the current uses, and so, there should not be any perceivable increase in traffic. The nursing students would already be present on the campus, so they shouldn't be generating additional vehicle trips. The previous item, you supported a change to the land use map, which would support university zoning in this case. And so, on page 12, we have summarized findings that we think support Kansas Wesleyan's application. And the properties in question on Kerwin and Claflin are more suitable for university use than continued residential use due to their proximity to the main campus. The R2 zoning on the corner inhibits the reuse of that building for the nursing degree program. This property is adjacent to existing U-zoned energy properties, and so, it would be a logical extension of the existing university district along Claflin Avenue. We have needed public utilities and streets in place to serve the needs of the request area. And we indicated in our previous report that we thought an amendment to the land use plan was justified in these circumstances. So, your options could be to recommend approval of this request for university zoning. You could recommend that consideration of this application be postponed to allow the applicant or staff to provide you with additional information. Or you could recommend denial of the zoning change, provided that appropriate findings are made in support of denial. So, with that, we'd be open to any questions about the specific zoning aspects of this. As to any questions about the nursing degree program or the facility itself, we would defer those questions to the architect or representatives of Kansas Wesleyans.
Any additional comments by the applicant?
I'm Maggie Gellum with Jones Gillum Renz, representing Kansas Wesleyan. Basically, you've heard most of what we're doing here today. Dean's done a really good job of explaining our future plans for this area. As he mentioned, the parking to the west of the property that we've acquired will remain parking. The residence to the north as well will remain a residence. Those uses are not changing. But I did want to address a few things that he mentioned. He had mentioned that we are actually exempt from the landscaping regulations, and I just want to note that we have looked at that a little bit in our schematic plans, and we do intend to have landscaping around the property and to beautify that area. If you've driven by it recently, you know, it's, it's been abandoned, it's been vacant for a little while, so it looks a little bit like a sore thumb on that corner there. So, we do intend to, you know, beautify that area and the building to make it really blend in with campus and look aesthetically pleasing as you're driving down Claflin. The other thing we intend to do is the parking is a little bit, you know, the flow's not real great right now, so we do intend to go in and kind of reevaluate and look at the parking and create a little bit better flow so that not only the parking lot's full a little better, but the traffic in that area does as well. So, if you have any other questions for me or Matt Thompson, we'd be happy to answer.
Just to clarify, there is a plan to add on to the building?
Yes. So, there is a plan to put two small additions on the building, one on the south side, and new vestibule and entry, as well as one on the north side. That would be our new staircase and elevator that would go down to the laboratories in the basement level.
Any citizens that want to make any comments or have opinions that need to be heard? Ready for motion?
I recommend application Z19-8 to the City Commission that the subject properties be changed to U designation.
It's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
For the benefit of the representatives of Kansas Wesleyan, that is a recommendation that will go to the City Commission on the 23rd of September. So we'll keep you informed and get you a report in advance of that, but this is a recommendation to them to do an ordinance that will change the zoning.
Thank you. We look forward to the improvements. Next on the agenda.
The next two items are also quasi-judicial in nature in our public hearings. And 3.2A and B are companion items. And the first item, just to be clear, is dealing with the zoning classification of the property, which is presently R1, single-family residential. And the application is to change that zoning classification to a planned development district. And with that, approval of a preliminary development plan for the Grand Prairie Villas PDD to allow construction of patio homes on 50-foot-wide lots. So the first item deals with what the appropriate zoning rules and regulations dealing with the style, type, size, housing, and density that would be allowed. And the second application is a proposed replat that would further subdivide what is currently 18 lots into 36 residential building lots. The property we're talking about is a property that's located at the far north end of Bent Grass Drive, and that contains 7.73 acres. So John, I don't, you have some graphics for this that we can start with. I'd like to start with the R1 development standards for Grand Prairie. So just so everybody is starting out on the same page, and you have this at your places there. R1 is a zoning designation that deals with, the 1 is an indication of the number of dwelling units that are permitted per lot, and also an indication of the density. So the present zoning rules that are in place for Grand Prairie addition and any other R1-zoned subdivision, which most of our residential subdivisions in Salina are zoned R1 for single-family homes. The minimum front yard setback is 25 feet. The minimum side yard from the side of a house to a side lot line is 7 and 1/2 feet. The minimum rear yard is 25 feet. The minimum platted lot area is 6,000 square feet. The minimum lot width is 60 feet. The minimum lot depth is 100 feet. The maximum building height of a house is 35 feet. The maximum amount of an individual building lot that can be covered by buildings such as houses, covered decks, covered patios, garages, storage sheds, is 35% of a lot. So one thing, just as we go into this discussion, there is not a separate zoning category or separate plating requirements for affordable housing or workforce housing or things that may be referred to in that fashion. The R1 is a designation of density. There are no minimum house size requirements in the R1 zoning district. There are just lot size and setback requirements. So we don't have zoning regulations that are designed to accommodate a particular size of home. So now if you go back up to the top, please, John. Mr. Shepherd has submitted a application for a planned development district for this northern portion. And what we have identified over on the right-hand side is that he is requesting to be allowed to build the homes with a 20-foot front yard setback instead of 25, with a 5-foot reduced side yard. So 10 feet between dwellings instead of 15, and no reduction to the rear yard. The average size of the lots that he's proposing is a little over 7,000 square feet. So even with the reduced width, the square footage of the lots proposed exceeds the minimum requirement for an R1-zoned area. The lot width he's proposing, 50 feet, does not meet the minimum requirement. And the ranges of the lots in this area range from 120 to a little over 150 feet. So they exceed the minimums. And as to the size of the dwellings, when we looked at the footprint of some of the dwellings because of the narrower lots, some of the dwellings being proposed covered up to 45% of the building lot. So if you're talking about lot coverages that exceed the maximum, you're not talking about small dwellings, because you have to have a fairly large footprint to cover more than 35% of a lot. So that is a starting point. That is the summary of why a planned development district is being requested, because the development proposal does not conform with those aspects of the R1 district. It does not conform as to front setback, side setback, lot coverage, or lot width. So, John, we ought to be able to have some sort of overview here, the subdivision with contours, or something where we can show the overall context of where Grand Prairie So the origins of the Grand Prairie addition actually date back to the early 1990s and late 80s, when the Graves family owned all of the remaining property over here, what they referred to as the Mariposa Area, and called, they presented what they called the Mariposa Master Plan. And so the, if you've been here long enough, you will remember where Marymount Road came down and made a T-intersection with Cloud Street, and you took a gravel Cloud Street and went east over to Markley. So the Mariposa Master Plan called for elimination of Cloud Street and substitution of this new street, which is today called Cedar Ridge Drive, that connects Marymount over to Markley Road. And because of the configuration of the golf course, which was, land was donated to the city by the Graves family, left this odd configuration between the golf holes. So in 2008, the Planning Commission looked at a request to rezone this property from agricultural to R1, single-family. And the Planning Commission voted unanimously in March of 2008 to rezone this property to R1, single-family. And the commission's reasoning at the time was that although this site is landlocked on three sides, it has drainage on and access to a collector's street and is suitable for some form of residential development. The developer's street layout follows the existing contours of the property, and the proposed lot layout preserves and highlights the natural features present on the property. The development proposed is residential in nature, and the densities and building styles would be compatible with municipal golf course and the character of nearby residential development. The proposed R1 zoning is compatible with existing and future zoning and uses of nearby property. The property is located in the existing city limits, and adequate public facilities and services are available or can be extended to serve the site. And the comprehensive plan identified the site as a low-density residential area. So the City Commission concurred with that recommendation. The property was rezoned and platted in May of 2009, and it has been developed since that time in accordance with the R1 district regulations. And so Mr. Bill Shepherd, who was part of that original development group, has filed two applications for your consideration. One is changing the final phase to what is entirely zoned A1 and has 18 lots that average 100 feet in width. He's proposing to further subdivide those 18 lots into 36 lots to allow for villa-style homes on narrower 50-foot lots. This home style can be referred to also as patio homes or courtyard homes. They differ from townhomes because they are detached homes on owner-occupied lots, but often with outdoor patios or courtyards and shared yard maintenance. So he's requesting this change in order to reduce the lot width, the front yard and side yard building setbacks, and is requesting that the Planning Commission approve his proposed development plan for the property. And so again, a planned development district is a tool that allows the Planning Commission, City Commission, to approve variations or exceptions to standard zoning district requirements and to create customized zoning requirements for specific development proposals. A copy of Mr. Shepherd's development proposal is attached. So John, do you think you can put up the preliminary PDD? So this is a depiction of how Mr. Shepherd would like to develop the lots by turning 18 lots into 36 and constructing 36 patio homes or villa-style homes. He wants to create an innovative housing product that's not currently offered in the Salina market. His vision is to provide villa-style living units on smaller lots with shared maintenance targeted towards seniors age 55 and over. So again, because his plan does not fit neatly into any of the city's existing residential districts based on lot coverage and setback requirements, staff determined that creation of a PDD was the best method for trying to accommodate his plans. And so this requires the middle of a development plan, which you see in front of you, and a public hearing before the Planning Commission. So this application that you're conducting a hearing on is to change the zoning district classification from R1 to planned development district R1. So we would point out that even with the change, the underlying zoning is not going to change. It's still going to be R1 for single-family dwellings. It's a question of the bulk regulations and the densities. So the two main differences between standard zoning and a PDD is, the PDD allows you as the Planning Commission to create a customized zoning district for a proposed development. You can approve deviations, exceptions to standard requirements, but you can also attach conditions of approval to any zoning change. The other thing that's different is that a planned development district requires a specific site plan to be made part of the zoning change. And that allows you to address concerns about the number, location, size, and type of buildings permitted, the architectural appearance of proposed buildings, and site landscaping and drainage. So I'm going to pause there and just remind the commission that when you see a subdivision plat, such as Grand Prairie, was presented in 2008, you are not receiving any information about the location, the size, the style, any of those things about the future homes. You are only seeing the layout of the lots and streets. And so the R1 district does not regulate building size, building style, architectural materials, any of those things. That is not addressed through the zoning. Planned development district allows the commission to establish all those things. So our most recent example I can think of is Wildcat Circle, which is located east of Ohio, along Wayne, where it terminates before it reaches the flood control levee. And that is a neighborhood that was developed with 20-foot front yard setbacks, and that was done through a planned development district. In the vicinity of this property, Mariposa and River Run are both planned development districts. Florida Soul Town Homes is a planned development district. So the Highland Meadows Hamlet is a planned development district. So there's a number of residential subdivisions that have been done as planned development districts. The other thing we would point out as the density, the R1 district is intended to provide a dwelling zone at a density of 6,000 square feet per dwelling unit, which equates to 7.26 units per acre. Most of our subdivisions in the older developed parts of the city are in the four-to-five-units-per-acre density. A lot of our newer subdivisions are in the neighborhood of three units per acre. The Grand Prairie addition, because of some open space and other things, the current density is 1.88 units per acre. And if the applicant's proposal were approved, it would increase the density to 2.38 units per acre. The proposed density within the rezoning request area itself is 4.6 units per acre, which is still within the range of densities typically found in an R1 district. So the density being proposed, the housing style is still single-family. The density, while denser than the rest of the subdivision, is still within what we would consider to be the low-density range. And again, to summarize, the applicant is requesting a reduction in the minimum lot width from 60 feet to 50 feet, minimum front yard building setback from 25 feet to 20 feet, minimum side yard setback from 7 and 1/2 feet to 5 feet, and increase in the maximum allowable lot coverage from 35% to 45% of a building lot. So, John, if you could show us a sample floor plan elevation? So you have these in your packet. These are just typical floor plans. We'll ask the applicant to expand on that, but it's staff's understanding that these floor plans, the footprints, are in the 1,600 to 2,500-square-foot range. And we would ask the applicant to address that further. So if you could go back to an overview, John, maybe the subdivision with contours? So if you could go back to an overview, John, maybe the subdivision with contours. So as we look at the suitability of this site for development, the staff's view that this was a very challenging piece of property to develop. In some ways, staff is amazed that the developers were actually able to find a way to make it developable. And credit for that goes to their original engineers, Campbell and Johnson, who was able to come up with a way to provide sanitary sewer service. And it's, it's difficult to, to see the green lines. Maybe you can blow it up a little bit, John, but these, these green lines represent the sewer network. And in order to make this subdivision work, or to make the, this area here developable, the sewer, sewage would be collected here, brought down to this point, and then it travels underneath the golf course and goes over to a manhole by Mariposa. These areas here go in a roundabout fashion and everything ends up here and goes over to there. When we originally looked at it, staff didn't think that an engineer could make all that work, but they were able to do it. And so there was a great deal of give and take and cooperation between the city of Salina, the municipal golf course, and the developers of Grand Prairie to make this work. And so, based on its unique peninsula location and shape, its proximity and access from Cedar Ridge Drive, the applicant believes that this site is suitable for innovative housing style targeted to residents 55 and older with reduced lot sizes and outdoor maintenance. I don't know, John, do you have access to an overall ArcGIS map, aerial photo? So, one of the things we wanted to point out, at least as it relates to the golf course, there's, there's a couple of locations where we have Fairway Estates and we have Florida Soul that are townhome developments that abut the golf course. So if you could zoom out a little bit, John? So we have the, the Florida Soul development here and we have Fairway Estates actually here. So we, we have, there are some locations where there are townhomes. This development right here is actually zoned and platted today for 28 townhomes. And so, there are locations where, next to the golf course where townhome location's been suitable, Mr. Shepherd has made the choice to build single-family detached dwellings and not townhomes. As we look at the zoning and uses of nearby property, one thing you'll notice about this area is that it is surrounded on three sides. So the, the development starts here and on three sides it's surrounded by the golf course, so it's fairly isolated. The one area it does abut is Phase 2 of the Grand Prairie addition, which is directly to the south. There has been concern expressed by residents of Grand Prairie addition that the types and style of home proposed by Mr. Shepherd would not be compatible with the existing homes in Grand Prairie. Staff's review of this, they believe that the use, which is single-family homes, and the architectural style and appearance standpoint, that the development concept is compatible with the zoning and uses of nearby property. So, the, the footprints that we reviewed on the preliminary development plan had some footprints that were up to over 2,400 square feet and covered more than 35% of the lot. Mr. Shepherd has submitted sample home floor plans, but because they're not dimensioned at a scale, we would prefer to have you hear from Mr. Shepherd himself about what those square footages would be. But John, if you want to go to our renderings or our elevations, and you have these in your packet, you have them under renderings or elevations, John? So, again, one of the things about a planned development district, if there's a particular architectural style, or materials, or exterior that you're wanting to make sure gets incorporated into the planned development district, you can do that through conditions of approval. So if you could just scan through those, please, John? So these are representative samples that would correspond to the floor plans or the footprints that you saw on the preliminary development plan.
Dean, let me stop you right there. You gave us a handout maybe last year saying that the front door should be near the front of the property so that all the neighbors could see who's going to somebody's house, make it a lot safer. I think they called it, uh, front door in a, in the back of a U?
Well, we may have discussed that some in the context of having accessory dwellings, but we don't, we don't have anything in our code that dictates other than the front address of the house has to face the street so the, the entrance is visible and identified for emergency response personnel. But all of these, you may have preferences for one above the other. If you could go to the street view, John? So what we're, these, and I have a, a photo of patio homes at your place from Loveland, Colorado, but the, these street views are, again, trying to convey what the street view would be of the, the homes as they would be viewed from Bent Grass Drive. I think there might, maybe that's the only one, John? So, we would ask that the applicant provide you with additional information, both about the planned square footage and any particular plans for architectural styles or building materials. But as to the public water supply and fire protection, there were steps taken at the time this originally developed in 2009 to construct an off-site water line that goes over to Markley Road so that there are two sources of flow for this subdivision. So we have water coming from the south from Cedar Ridge Drive and we have water coming from Markley Road. So there, there's a loop system and two sources of flow. We've had a meeting with the fire marshal and building officials and they indicate that as long as there's a five-foot separation from the property line, there's no increased risk of fire spread. There's no need for fire sprinklers or any type of fire-rated construction. The sewage disposal plan was all worked out at the time this property was platted in 2009. The storm drainage collection system is all in place. And the plans call for the northern portion of Bent Grass Drive to drain to the south to the roundabout where there's a discharge point that goes on to the golf course. So John, if you could find the aerial photo with the vicinity map that's associated with PDD 19-1, it would be a good opportunity to get that up. The fire protection would be from Station 4 at Marymount and Crawford. It's about a five-minute response time to the entrance to the subdivision. The streets would be public, so police protection would be provided by the Salina Police Department once Bent Grass Drive is extended. This property's in the Meadowark Ridge, Lakewood, and Salina Central enrollment areas, but it's anticipated to be a 55 and over development, so there should not be an increase in the school-aged population. This property is subject to the Neighborhood Park Service Fee, which is collected at time. Building permits are issued. I think one focus of our discussion today has to be streets and traffic. It's certainly not ideal that city staff, the planning commission, and the, and the city commission determined back in 2009 that 70 building lots in this subdivision could be safely and efficiently served by the single access point on the applicant's plat. There's actually more concern looking at where that should connect to Cedar Ridge Drive due to concerns about sightlines. There was options explored for a second way in for emergency vehicles, and that was ultimately addressed by the construction of an emergency access road from Markley Road over to the north end of the subdivision. So, there's an emergency road that leads from Markley Road and traverses the golf course and goes to the, the north end of this subdivision. There's an easement across the golf course for that road. And again, the comprehensive plan shows this as suburban residential. And as we reviewed this plan, it's our belief that the development proposal, 4.6 units per acre in Phase 3 and 2.38 units overall, would be consistent with the suburban residential land use designation. So, we have done quite a bit of analysis of this proposal as most of the hard work was done in 2009 when this was proposed to begin with. But as we look at this, if we look at the use, when we look at the architectural appearance of the dwelling units, staff's belief is that the concept is compatible with the zoning and uses of nearby property. The housing style that's being proposed is not currently offered anywhere in the Salina housing market, and this is being offered to a specific demographic group, 55 and over seniors. The comprehensive plan, the Live Salina Plan, and the city's special assessment policy all encourage housing developers to consider providing innovative housing forms or project designs that incorporate higher-density housing types, including small lot, single-family detached, or attached configurations. So the question for you at this hearing is whether this is the right location for it. That is the purpose of today's hearing. There's no doubt that the applicant's proposed development will increase the number of driving trips on Bent Grass Drive above what was originally projected because it's going to add 18 dwelling units. And so ideally, you'd have the higher-density housing located closer to a collector's street. But Grand Prairie has a very unusual layout, as you can see, due to many physical constraints. So when we reported to the commission in 2008, we anticipated that Grand Prairie could generate as many as 700 trips per day onto Cedar Ridge Drive, with 450 of those trips occurring on Bent Grass Drive. If the applicant's development concept is approved, that could increase from 700 originally projected to 808, up to as many as 880 vehicles a day with majority of those being on Bent Grass Drive. There is not a objective benchmark or measure that we can hand you that says this is too much traffic. We can tell you that there's a number of residential streets that carry well over 1,000 vehicles per day. The most recent traffic count on Cedar Ridge Drive from KDOT is 1,175 vehicles a day, which probably is an indication that, which staff believes, and we're looking at that as it relates to Markley Road, that the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is the manual that virtually every municipality uses, has a trip generative rate of 10 vehicle trips per household per day, and that is probably overestimating the number of trips. So, what is considered too much traffic on a street that is the outlet for a subdivision is somewhat subjective and you will have to ply your own judgment on this matter. So, the two things that we would ask you to focus on is, is this the right place for this style of housing and housing product? And is the additional traffic that would be generated by 18 additional lots, is that too much traffic for a street that has only one outlet? And just so that it's entered into the minutes and the record, I'm going to summarize the situation of some other subdivisions in Salina. So, you're familiar with Highland Meadows Hamlet that is located on Magnolia Road, that has one road in and out, that's St. Andrews Lane. Highland Meadows Hamlet has 85 lots that all enter and exit from St. Andrews onto Magnolia. The River Trail addition is located on the north side of Magnolia, adjacent to the city's flood control levee. That has one route in from Magnolia Road, and that's River Trail Road, and that serves 136 lots. There's a development called Hidden Meadows, and it's quite well-hidden up against the flood control levee east of Ohio. That has 54 lots, and the only way in to that is from Republic Avenue, which deadends into Republic Circle. Then there's Golden Eagle Estates Number 5, which is Wildcat Circle. There's only one way into that development, and that is Red Hawk Lane. And that is, that has 77 lots. And then finally, there is River Run, and the only way into River Run is River Run Parkway. And that is accessed from South Marymount Road onto River Run Parkway. And as presently constituted, there's 98 lots in River Run, and all 98 lots are served by a single access point out to Marymount Road. So again, we have 85 lots in Highland Meadows, one way in and out, 136 lots in River Trail, one way in and out, 77 lots in Golden Eagle Number 5, and Red Hawk Lane is the only route in and out, and River Run, which has River Run Parkway with 98 lots. So, that is what we're talking about here, is a projection of going from 70 to 88 lots served by a single outlet, which is Bent Grass Drive. So, we have identified, as it relates to the zoning, that you could recommend approval of the applicant's request for PDD R1 zoning, including the modifications that have been requested and approval of the development plan that's been presented. Your second option would be to approve it with those modifications and with the preliminary development plan, subject to any conditions that a majority of you deem appropriate. Those conditions could relate to dwelling size, dwelling style, exterior materials, any, any number of things. You could recommend that this be approved only with significant revisions being made to the proposed development plan, such as you want to reduce the number of lots by a third, or by a fourth, or some percentage. Or, you could recommend that application be postponed to a future hearing to allow the applicant or staff to provide you with additional information. Or you could recommend denial of the rezoning application, provided appropriate findings are made in support of denial. So, we have reviewed this as a staff and looked at this in the way it relates to the comprehensive plan and the Live Salina Plan and our special assessment policy. And staff's recommendation would be to approve this application and the preliminary development plan, including the variations that were requested as to lot width, front setback, side setback, and lot coverage. That each dwelling unit has to have a minimum of 1,200 square feet of heated floor space, exclusive of the attached garage. That is certainly something that could be modified or varying. That landscaping shall consist of one street tree- That landscaping shall consist of one street tree for each individual dwelling unit selected from the city's approved tree list and planted by the builder. Development shall be limited to single-family detached dwellings, so substantially conform to the approved development plan. And that the elevation drawings that the applicants prepared to live with would be incorporated as part of the approved preliminary development plan. So we have shown you elevation drawings of some sample dwellings, and we don't want, it is within your authority to say, "We want them to look like this." And then that would be incorporated into the planned development district. And we have provided our reasoning for that. Because this is a relatively isolated location, we think it's suitable for this form of housing. We think the exterior appearance will be compatible with existing housing as to design, exterior materials, and appearance. Adequate utilities exist or will be extended to serve the villa-style homes. We already have an emergency access road that connects to the subdivision. Certainly, the additional trips are not ideal, but even with the additional density, it would only increase the density here to 2.38 units per acre, which is well below the development density of a typical subdivision in Salina. This is a residential suburban, or suburban residential area, and the density proposed conforms with that. And the applicant is proposing a housing style that's not currently offered in the Salina market. And the comprehensive plan specifically recommends utilizing planned development districts as a tool to promote a variety of dwelling types within a single-family neighborhood pattern. So our observation is, when I'm asked to describe a planned development district, I describe it as a, for the Planning Commission, as what you see is what you get zoning. And so in our straight commercial zones, like C5, or in our residential zones, straight zoning R1, the developer can present to you a concept, and they can completely change their minds, and if their concept is still within the parameters of R1 or C5, they can bring you in a zoning change and say, the one thing they won't build there is a convenience store, and if it's straight commercial zoning, they can tell you one thing and build a convenience store later. But in a planned development district, the developer cannot tell you one thing and change it, because in order to change it, a planned development district would have to come back before the planning commission. So again, our order of business is presentation of the staff report, commissioner questions for staff, then to hear comments by the applicant, to hear comments from interested citizens, to hear any additional rebuttal comments from the applicant or citizens, and then if the Planning Commission Chair chooses to, closing off the public portion and allowing you to discuss this among yourselves. So with that, staff would be open to any questions that you have. I'm going to assume our movie is still sideways, and so it's probably not beneficial.
The access road from Markley?
Yes.
I can't imagine having machinery, fire trucks crossing some of the fairways, and, you know, especially with this weather we've been having.
The, there are concrete pavers that have been installed across the golf course. Concrete pavers are a device that you have concrete with hollowed spots where the grass grows up between them, and in order to support the weight of a fire truck, they have to be able to support 75,000 pounds. And so there is a road that goes from Markley Road to the north end of this subdivision that is, consists of concrete pavers that the fire department believes supports the weight of their fire trucks. The other reason that we know that it works is because until Grand Prairie got developed, this was the site of all the City of Salina fireworks shows, and fire trucks were driven to the site regularly for the fireworks displays. And so the fire department has regularly driven fire trucks from Markley Road back to this site for fireworks displays.
And then the drainage, and that's going to be a lot of square footage, where will that drain into?
John, I thought we had one of our aerial photos that had the utilities on it. There is...
There is a retention pond, but it seems to be further away than I would imagine. I just don't think it should be dumped on the golf course, is what I'm saying.
There are detention ponds farther down, but the area here will drain here and will discharge onto the golf course, and there are detention areas that were created on the golf course eventually. The original plan was to turn this into a water feature or pond between, but as they studied the landing patterns of people driving off the tees, they decided that that would be a very unpopular water hazard, and they said, "We're not going to have a pond here." But there are detention areas here, and then this water migrates across the golf course and gets over into the Mariposa Pond. But everything, everything was sized for this to drain down to here and then come across the golf course where it ends up in the Mariposa Pond. But all the, all the detention facilities and everything are already in place.
Okay. And then that peninsula, was it originally platted in 2009?
This, yes. This is exactly what the Planning Commission approved in 2009. So the, this is the roundabout. Everything north of the roundabout is where the villa-style housing is proposed, and as you can see, some of these are even wider, but the average width of these lots is about 100 feet. And so what the applicant's proposing is to come in here and reduce those to 50-foot lots, and then construct 36 homes here instead of 18. But it's already platted, this is what it looks like today, and so the only change is that from this portion up, this would be subdivided into 36 building lots instead So maybe you can rotate that 90 degrees, John, I don't know if you can, but... So if you're looking at it from that other view, this is, this is looking north, up to the north end of the subdivision. The water line and the emergency access road comes right through here, and there's an easement and road across the golf course that goes over to Markley Road. That's where the water line comes over from Markley, and that's where the emergency access road comes over from Markley. And that's not, that's not going to change if, if this request is recommended for denial, that's not going to change. It's already in place to serve the subdivision. The questions before you today are whether this is the right location for this style of housing, and how many trips is too many trips on a single-access subdivision street?
Are they suggesting the covenants would say they have to be 55 years old?
That would be something to address to the applicant. There are, under the Fair Housing Act, the only discrimination that is legal is to discriminate by age, and that's only done, you have to file certain covenants and paperwork to have a senior-only development. We have senior housing in Salina, and there are things that have to be filed with the HUD and with Fair Housing Administration to make sure that you have things in place in order to limit the population to 55 or older. But it is, that is the only form of permissible housing discrimination is to have an age-specific housing development, but Mr. Shepherd would have to address how he proposes to do that, whether he was, he's marketing towards, it's his distinction, that it's one thing to target a market, it's another thing to limit the housing to somebody age 55 and over, and there were certain things that would have to be done to limit it to age 55 and over.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. On the traffic counts for the street flow, I know that you listed four other locations that are the same thing, where we have just a single access point to it. Do you have traffic flows for those areas?
I do not, other than to go back to the staff reports, and again, the, almost every community in the country uses the Institute of Traffic Engineers' traffic projections, which is 10 vehicle trips per household per day. We've found, in the case of Markley Road and some other areas, where that seems to overstate the amount of vehicles generated per household. But if you applied that same formula, and we had 88 units, and every unit generated 10 trips per day, that would be 880 trips on coming out of Bent Grass, recognizing there's also Larkspur Lane and other streets in the subdivision, so not everybody is using Bent Grass Drive. But we look at how many people are exiting onto Cedar Ridge Drive. If you use 10 vehicle trips per dwelling across the board, it would be 880 here, it would be 850 coming out of Highland Meadows Hamlet, it would be 1,360 vehicles a day entering Magnolia Road from River Trail. It would be 770 trips per day on Red Hawk Lane, coming onto Wayne or Red Hawk Lane, and it would be 980 vehicle trips per day coming out of River Run onto South Marymount at full buildout. So that, that would be using the same estimate across the board. Those have certain assumptions built in, are trying to cover the situation where a household, you have a four or five-bedroom household, and there's multiple teen drivers and that type of thing, where you can generate a lot more trips per household than you would if you had seniors. So it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all. So in the case of Markley Road, we're going out and doing actual, physical traffic counts because we think that the 10-vehicle trips per household overstates the number of trips, especially if you look at Cedar Ridge Drive just by itself, it's only carrying 1,100 vehicles a day, and it's hard to believe that, that that many trips are coming out of Cedar Ridge from Grand Prairie alone, because Cedar Ridge Drive provides access to Briargate, to Valley View Estates, to Valley View, and to Cedar Ridge, and to a degree, Mariposa. So all of those subdivisions are contributing to vehicles on Cedar Ridge Drive, plus pass-through traffic.
But also Great Life Golf Course, and sometimes that can generate 200, 300 vehicles a day there?
So I just researched those so that you had something to compare it to. The other thing I would note, and I didn't list it on my list here, but if you're familiar with Woodland Hills Estates, which is east of Sykes Drive, and it's north of Presbyterian Manor, it's got Pine Ridge Drive and Estates Drive, the only way in and out of that subdivision is to use Sykes Drive to get to Crawford. And when that was proposed, we had a number of residents on Sykes Drive that appeared before the Planning Commission that were concerned that all the people in that subdivision would be driving by their houses on Sykes Drive, and that, that is correct, and it did happen. But it just changed the number of vehicles using Sykes Drive, and it changed patterns in that area, but that's what Sykes Drive was designed to do, so...
All right. Anything else?
I just had a question, as far as, are there any recommendations as to how many parking spaces per plot of land, as far as street parking goes?
Well, we require for every single-family residence that is built in Salina, the builder has to demonstrate that they can provide two off-street spaces. And those two off-street spaces, they can be in a garage or in a, on a driveway. For example, my residence, I have a single-car garage and a single-wide driveway. So I have one space in my garage and one space in my driveway. We're seeing a lot of new homes, almost every new home has at least a two-car garage, in some cases, three. As I looked at the applicant's floor plan, it seemed that most of the floor plans had at least a two-car garage, so the expectation, the reason we would not go under 20 foot for a front yard setback is that, as I see the applicant's plan, there would be two spaces in the garage and two spaces on the driveway. And so one thing we would point out that's unique about Cedar Ridge Drive is that Cedar Ridge Drive is actually narrower than Bent Grass Drive is. Bent Grass Drive is 33 feet back-to-back. Cedar Ridge Drive is 29 feet back-to-back, but Cedar Ridge Drive was designed to have parking prohibited, and Bent Grass Drive was designed to have parking on one side. But the applicant has to design a housing product that provides at least two off-street spaces per dwelling. And so that doesn't mean that you couldn't have overflowed parking in the street, but see, Bent Grass is, is designed at 33 feet to accommodate parking in the street if necessary. It's not prohibited, I don't believe it's very commonplace, because most of the dwellings in Cedar Ridge, off of Cedar Ridge Drive in that vicinity have two- and three-car garages, so there's not much on-street parking. Whereas in my neighborhood with single-car garages and single-wide driveways, we have lots of on-street parking, so...
Is there a sidewalk on Cedar Ridge?
There is, along the north side.
So there would be continuous sidewalk from the north end of development to Cedar Ridge Drive?
Yes, there would be sidewalks required on Bent Grass Drive, and there would be, from the north end of Bent Grass Drive down to Cedar Ridge Drive would be a sidewalk network. We should have some, do we have a current aerial photo or map of Grand Prairie, John? This is an older photo. We can zoom in on that. So this, the Phase Two of this development's been approved, but the, it just doesn't show up on the aerial photo. The street goes all the way up to the roundabout now, it's just not showing on this aerial photo, because this is a 2017 photo. But there's a, there was a sidewalk on Cedar Ridge Drive that was constructed when the street was built in 2004.
I think we're ready for the applicant to... I think we're ready for the applicant to come up.
Good afternoon, my name's Bill Shepherd, 430 Greystone. I'm the applicant and the developer, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Could you clarify, staff's question about your proposed building footprints, what you're anticipating in the way of the size of these villa dwellings?
15 to 1600 up to 25, 2600 is our size. I mean, if you can go back to the floor plans, and I want to explain something. So, if you may. These are designed as a patio home, so every, every one of these has a private patio of some sort, if you see. So, for instance, every one of these has a patio on the right, and so this home wouldn't have any windows looking onto this patio. This, this is the same way, so there are private courtyards here, you'll notice there's no windows looking onto the patio. So everybody gets some private courtyard space, and that would be that way down the entire side of the development, so. And they'll also have the availability to have courtyard or patio space on the rear side, too, with the golf court queue, but this gives everybody a private patio. And, and a denser housing product that the city is looking for, and it allows for common maintenance, it's just a different atmosphere, it's something we don't have here, so.
I wanted to address one other thing, there's some concerns about the, about the traffic, and there's just not much out there as far as studies go, but there was one development in Corona, California, very similar situation, but on a larger scale, going from 1,443 homes of all, single-family, or what they call "all age," to 1,100 homes with 900 age-qualified, so they increased by 40%. But they did an environmental impact study that was required by the state of California, and they're, but this, with the age-qualified design, there was an anticipated 70% reduction in traffic and water use, and that was part of their study. I don't, you know, I can't, that's the only thing I could find online, there were some concerns about that, but my opinion is, with senior traffic, a lot of them leave together, they come home together, they're not leaving at eight, coming back at five, it's just a different type of traffic, so.
And did you understand what I asked about the hidden entryway? You know, the neighbors can't see what's going on, if somebody wanted to break down a door, their, all the views of their front door are obstructed.
And not all of them are, and this, again, there might be, they're not exactly obstructed, they might be off to the side or back into an area, but that's pretty common in new construction, you'll see that everywhere in today's market. I mean, that's not-
I understand that, I'm just saying that there's a safety factor there.
So, John, can you blow those up a little bit? And again, we just showed you some, staff did some research, and we found, I think, no less than half a dozen subdivisions currently under development that were advertising or promoting this style of patio home. But this, this seems to have a front, a sidewalk and entrance here, this is having a front sidewalk and entrance here. If you want to go over to the other one, John, so we can see it, that one seems to be-
It's right there in front, on the front there.
Yeah, right, right here. So, again, this is a planned development district, if, if there are things related to orientation, building materials, size, any of those things, they are all, can be addressed as, as conditions, in terms of the orientation of the dwellings. We've talked, focused on setbacks, but if there's concerns about architectural style, materials, those types of things, then that's something the commission-
What would be the median price of these homes?
I think they're going to start in the three, lower 300s up to mid-400s probably, depending on size, because they vary a lot in size. I mean, you're talking 1,500 square foot up to 2,500 square feet.
And what's the value, the median value of the rest of the subdivision?
I think they probably start in the mid-3s and probably go up to 700.
So the same, basically the same price?
Similar, yeah, on the low end, that's correct.
Do these have basements?
Do not. No, they will have storm rooms, they're designed for no steps, they're at a point in people's life that they don't need basements, don't want them, it's a maintenance issue, so, and it's a price point issue as well.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I assume you're developing Grand Prairie south of there?
That's correct, yes.
And then, what type of siding and, or exterior look do you have?
Stone, brick, stucco.
And I assume that's what you would plan on continuing?
Exactly the same, yeah, very similar to what you see in those pictures depicted. I mean, they won't, they can't be exactly identical, because those aren't my plans, but very similar in style. Probably not the brick eyebrow, but more of an all stone area I could perceive there. But yes, and they'll all be the same color, similar stone.
Continuing what you have, yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. I do have a video that shows, the problem is, it runs sideways on this computer, I still think it could be shown, and use your imagination, lay down, watch it, whatever.
If you want to try it, John, we'll just all have to tilt our heads. We can't, we've tried every-
This is something I've worked on for a couple of years, I met with the city a couple of years ago about it, and it was, at the time, the city commission was pushing denser housing, and there was a need for senior or 55-plus housing as well, so. Now, these are about seven foot apart, we're going to be 10 foot apart, so ours will be further apart than these.
So these are actual homes somewhere?
These are actual homes, yes. That was emailed to him, so-
And then, the, the concept behind patio homes is to have reduced yard areas for maintenance, but to have an outdoor area, but usually an outdoor area that's a private patio or courtyard as opposed to a yard. And so, that, the concept is, some patio homes are attached to each other, these are all detached and separated, but the, the thing that's consistent is that they're usually on smaller lots with reduced yards, there's usually a shared maintenance responsibility, and there's some sort of enhanced patio or courtyard for outdoor living, so that the yard becomes less important.
And does the southern portion of the development have covenants?
They do, yes.
And does that include a prohibition of splitting lots?
It does, but this is not a lot split, this is a replat.
A replat, okay.
Sure. Is it safe to assume that the covenants in this replat would be consistent with the rest of the subdivision? Yes, there'll be some added covenants for the, for the new area, because they have common maintenance or common mowing, some issues, we'll address that, but yes, they'll, they'll still pitch into the coffers of the, of the maintenance of the islands and stuff like that that we have now, so. Okay.
So there's a homeowners association?
There is, correct, yeah.
So the, what the covenants read, and I, I did help with the language in the review of this, it says, "No lot shall be split or divided into a parcel with lesser dimensions than that of the recorded plat." So what a lot split is, and we've had the four neighborhoods where special assessments are done, the lot split is the bane of everyone's existence, and we've had some cases in the past of developers going in, they plat a lot, they split off part of the lot to nobody, that nobody gets a special assessment for the street, water, and sewer, that nobody doesn't pay the assessment for street, water, and sewer, and it ends up going to tax sale or something like that, then you end up with a no man, it's not big enough to build on, it just got split off to reduce the specials on a lot. And so, the covenants specifically say that you can't have dimensions less than what's on the recorded plat. If Mr. Shepherd's request is approved, he will have a recorded plat that will have 50-foot lots instead of 100. If it's not approved, he cannot go in and do lot splits to avoid the replat. So, he, the purpose of the covenants is to prevent somebody from creating a whole bunch of small lots without going through the plating process. Not to say that they're locked in at that size forever, it's just to keep, because a lot split is not a public process, a lot split doesn't come to the Planning Commission for review, in this case, the replat is coming to you for your review and would be recorded if approved. And just, again, the city staff does not enforce covenants, but just for the benefit of the commission, the covenants state that exterior elevations and siding of new homes, exterior components may include natural or cast stone, standard brick, wood, concrete-based materials such as hardy plank or equivalent, or ephes, which is a stucco-type system. Materials not to be utilized shall include CMU units, aluminum, vinyl, or plywood siding. So exterior design should be consistent to avoid a false front or storefront effect. So those, those are the covenants. What we're suggesting is that today, those covenants are a private affair, enforced privately. If you have feelings about what the exterior elevations or material should be, and they're incorporated in the planned development district, then those aren't private covenants, those are publicly enforced by the city. So, again, the planned development district is the highest level of control that the city can exercise on a development.
And you indicated you would finish these in 12 months?
No. No, they won't be finished in 12 months.
The 12 months refers to his goal to get the streets and the water and sewer in to make the property buildable. That's his goal. Today, it's not developable, but his goal was to be able to get the streets and the water and the sewer in, so he can begin building within 12 months.
Any other questions?
I believe that's it.
Thank you.
We'll open it to public comment.
I'm Todd Luckman, I'm an attorney with Stumbow-Hanson, I've been hired by several of the homeowners in the Grand Prairie area to address you tonight. You have a letter in front of you that I produced. It is based upon the best information we had available, and I want to be clear about my position here. I'm going to address with you guys some legal aspects of this that I think are important to consider when you're, when you're going to decide this. I'm not going to try to replace the landowners themselves about their knowledge of the area, their knowledge of their own homes, because they are very, very interested in this, because as you can see, these homeowners bought properties based upon a plat, based upon covenants of that whole area, and the whole area is covered by those covenants. And those covenants exist, as does the zoning code of the city, to preserve the value of properties in the city. And the general consensus is, is that by doing this change, you are reducing the value of the properties that have relied upon the covenants and the zoning as it has existed for 10 years. And that's, as I understand it, this was originally developed in 2009, 2008, for the kind of development we have in some of these areas, and it was supposed to continue. Now, here's where I think, you know, I've addressed a couple of points about the 12-month guarantee, about, there's no landscaping plan, we can go over all these little details till we're blue in the face, but the fact of the matter is, is I think that you're not being advised properly about the effect of the covenants in this instance, in, in a number of aspects. Because if you were considered to be the actual grantors of this zoning change, under the regulations, 42403, subsection 6 and 7, both essentially say that you are either to obtain and have recorded covenants that you would then enforce, or I think fairly interpreted, that you should enforce the covenants that exist. And that is something that the city would be interested in controlling. Now, the question I kept coming back to, hearing the back and forth about how you guys can control all the development on this little area here, is why are you going to do that? There is covenants in this area that control the development, that control the landscaping, that control what fences you have, everything down to the nitty-gritty, so you guys don't have to. That's what the development plan was in 2009, that's what it should be today. And that's why this section is unnecessary. But at the same time, these covenants exist, and they should be enforced. I don't think that it's fair to say that these things are a personal matter to be enforced by the other landowners. There's one thing that, this little skipped over here, there's a surrounding landowner around this whole area, that's the city of Salina, and you're approving something that surrounds this area, and you're undermining the covenants of the landowners of this area. You folks should carefully consider about what you're doing, considering that factor, that you, by your action here, as adjoining landowner, are affecting the land values and the enforceability of the covenants. And I don't agree with the argument that this is not a lot split. Folks, this is a lot split. This is, the replat of one section of this thing is one of two things, either you're spot zoning this thing, you're taking a small area and rezoning the whole thing based upon the individual landowner's desire, or you're doing just what we, what we mentioned, which was, you're ignoring the covenants and you're undermining them, we need to stick to that. And that's, and that's the idea I think we have to get to, is that there's a way to enforce these covenants, these landowners will tell you exactly what they want and the details that they're desiring, but you guys have to consider the fact that this whole concept should be to enforce the existing regulations, and this shouldn't be considered a replat. They're essentially taking and doubling the lots in that, changing the footprint of these homes, changing the value dynamics. Now, you could put, you know, in, in all kinds of restrictions here, I'd like to put some of these in, writing that the minimum value of these houses is going to be $300,000 to $400,000 or beyond, or that they're going to be required to do that, but you don't have to. I mean, that, the, the way it is now is the way it was set up, what these people relied on, and they're entitled to that, and you should reject the rezoning, you should also reject the replat, because it's just a methodology to avoid the covenants and avoid what's going on here. The homeowners association, these folks can address that, I understand that it's not actually meeting, or it's not publicly notifying the, the landowners that it's meeting, so I think we have significant questions about this and a number of other aspects of these individual things. But safe to say, there's a definite concern, you ought to reject this, or at the very least postpone this, so you can consider some of the legal aspects of what you're talking about here as far as undermining the covenants of the local landowners. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and, with your, if you don't have any questions for me specifically, I'll be glad to turn it over to the landowners themselves.
Do you believe this body enforces covenants?
Well, I believe that you, two things, I believe that if you start a PDD, you have to, I think under the codes, you have to have covenants that you can enforce, that's what the regulations say.
And a PDD, is that, I don't believe that's correct.
Well, that's what the, I, I can read you the regulation and how I interpret it, but it's a difficulty because you have existing covenants, I'd agree. I, I think this is intended to be a development from the ground up, there's nothing there, no other homes, nothing, in a subdivision, and then you start out with this, and then there's no, so you don't have any covenants, you guys develop them, and become the enforcer of them at that point, right?
No, we do not enforce covenants.
All right, well, I, I want to make sure we're correct on this. It's, subsection 6 of 42403A, sub 6, says, "All such covenants shall specifically provide for enforcement by the city in addition to the landowners within the development." So I think we're in a bit of a weird area, like I said, because we already have existing covenants that's not intended to be existing land, I think, that's changed. I don't think it's appropriate to create new covenants in place of the old ones. And we're, like, that's what I'm saying, is we're stepping off here into a very new area to my mind, and one that I haven't seen, which is the idea that you can essentially obviate existing covenants by a zoning ordinance, create your additional ones, or different ones, or changed ones, that you guys would enforce. And you own the land around the place. So.
Just to get clarification, so you're, because my understanding is that the HOA and the covenants are something that are regulated between the property owners
Yes.
and the developer, or whoever's in charge of the HOA. As long as things fit within the parameters of our guidelines, that's what we're worried about. As far as overseeing covenants and all those intricacies, I don't believe that's our role.
Yeah, and I agree with-
And maybe I need some clarification from Mr. Andrews on that.
I agree with you.
Well, the way that the city has interpreted the PDD regulations is that any planned development district that has common area that's owned by an association, and that is common, particularly in the case of places like Florida Soul or Highland Meadows Hamlet, where the homeowners' association owns the streets, or they own a common area, then covenants are required in those situations. Staff make sure that covenants are recorded, which gives the city the right to go in and perform maintenance of common areas that aren't being maintained. So the enforcement aspect of covenants is that if Highland Meadows Hamlet doesn't maintain their streets, and they become unpassable to the public, the city can go in and enforce the maintenance of those and assess the cost. But as a general rule, if a subdivision has covenants, there is only one development in Salina where the city is a party to enforcement of the covenants, and that is Holiday Resort, and that is a simple expedient of the city commission did not believe that the developer could be trusted to enforce the covenants themselves, so the city was made a third party to the covenants. But that's, any other subdivision that has private covenants, those are between the homeowners and the city of, and the residents. So my example would be that if you have a subdivision, and the covenants say, "No detached garages can be built in this subdivision," and somebody applies for a building permit to build a detached garage, and it meets all of our zoning requirements, we're going to issue the permit for that garage, and then it's up to the homeowners' association or the enforcers of the covenants to block it. And the only exception to that would be when the city itself is a party to the covenants, and the only time that we're a party to the covenants is if there is common area that the homeowners' association's supposed to maintain, and they're not doing it.
Got it.
So, further with that, so you have a covenant, here's what the building plan is, somebody wants to build a detached garage, that garage is larger than what's under city code, then you can disallow that plan at that point in time, because it doesn't meet our code at that point, right?
Right. But that mere, the mere fact that a subdivision has recorded covenants that say you can't build a detached garage, if the zoning code allows a detached garage, and it meets the zoning code, we're going to issue the permit, and it's up to the homeowners' association or the enforcer of the covenants to enforce that against the property owner.
Could I address that?
Sure.
I agree with the idea that the covenants are enforced by the landowners. That's not at issue. What I'm saying is, is there's a discussion here during this whole thing about how this body would put certain restrictions on the use of the property, that you could require certain things of the buildings, that they be, you know, let's just say, covered 70% on the front side with stone. Say you guys impose that. What's expected in this, under these regulations, is that you would have the authority, if somebody built something that was not conforming, that you could enforce that. Now, what happens when that's contrary or different, or less than what the covenants are? I don't think that's the concept here. I think the concept initially was, is that the covenants would create the background for what you're talking about here, the 70%, the, how many garages, whatever, and that you guys could enforce them as well. Now, I understand the way it may have been interpreted, but you're still setting up a situation where you guys have the authority under this PDD to control certain aspects of the way this is developed, contrary to what the negative covenants state. And I'm not going to go too far into the weeds here, but, and I could certainly have a conversation with city's council about some authority I'd have for this, but I would say that's a dangerous zone to get into. And you at least ought to consider in this, and I think it's part of the requirements is, is that you guys consider what the covenants are in existence right now, and how they're being followed here, and how they would be followed in the new development. I mean, at the end of the day, you said-
But we're still circling back to, we don't oversee the covenants. I mean, for what Mr. Andrews said.
Yeah, and I'm saying, if you undermine them with a zoning decision, I think you have an issue.
I think what it comes back to is it's a replat, and according to the city's parameters, I understand it's open to interpretation, and I understand where you're coming from, but we have to abide by the guidelines that we've been presented. And it's not that we're deaf to the concerns of the residents in that neighborhood. I understand how you can, you know, you purchase a home at a certain price point, and all of a sudden, there's maybe a few homes that are going to be in that little bit lower tier, and how that might raise some eyebrows, but that's sometimes, that's how real estate works at times, at least based on my experience, you know, as far as the traffic concerns. And I guess I'd like to hear from more of the members of the neighborhood.
Yeah, and towards that end, I'm glad to leave the podium. I would just like to say, I think, understanding your position as having a very technical questions addressed to you, and dealing back and forth with that, you can't lose sight of the big picture, which is, your job here is to create zoning that supports the values and the land uses that exist as well. It's not just to consider one element of the whole, of a minor part of it. So we'd ask that you consider all of this, and the comments of the folks. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
I think I might ask Mr. Andrews, I was understanding that the PDD would be to the existing owner's benefit, because we then would try to, I mean, we would enforce or put in that PDD that we would want the same level of exterior quality that's already there. So I saw it as a, and that we would hear what it is that the existing homeowners want, and we can incorporate that in what we put in our motion.
That would be staff's perspective of what a planned development district is. The irony is, as the chair correctly pointed out, if, and I do actually review all residential permits for new homes, and if I get a building permit for a home in Grand Prairie, I am not going to and would never crack open the covenants and review the building permit per the covenants. I would review the building permit per the R1 zoning standards that we have gone over with you, and in the R1 zoning standards, there are no square footage limitations, there are no value limitations, there are no architectural limitations. If someone brought in a new home in Grand Prairie with vinyl siding, and it met all of our zoning requirements, I would issue the permit, and it would be up to the homeowners' association or the developer to block it. The difference is, in a planned development district, if you said, "No vinyl on new homes," and a building permit came in and there was vinyl, we would deny the permit. And that is, the irony is that the planned development district is more restrictive than the covenants, because the city won't issue a building permit that violates a planned development district, but we would issue a building permit that violates the covenants, and we would leave it to the homeowners' association or existing residents to enforce that. So yes, the planned development district is actually to the benefit of the current residents and homeowners, because planned development districts are enforceable by the city, whereas private covenants are not.
So I think it's a good time to, you know, to dialogue and hear what you all want, and then that, we can consider putting that in the PDD.
Does a homeowners' association have access to building permits and specs in a building?
Well, the way that it's supposed to work is that many subdivisions that have homeowners' associations have an architectural review committee or design review committee, and you cannot get a permit, or you cannot apply for a permit, and we have, in cases, for example, River Run. From River Run, we have a letter from the developer that says, "Please don't review building plans or issue a permit unless you have a letter from our architectural review committee approving those plans." And that makes sense. In many cases, it's the developer and somebody else that sets the architectural review committee. Grand Prairie has a design review committee, and if you want to build a house, and you bypass the design review committee, we'll still get you, we'll give you a building permit, but then it's up to the homeowners' association, or the design review committee, or whoever's designated to enforce, to block that. And that has happened. We've had a case where building permit was issued, and the homeowners' association went to the third-floor district court and got an injunction against the builder to stop their building. And that is the remedy when there are private covenants. The difference is, if you are in a planned development district, and the planned development district has requirements that are over and above standard zoning, and your plans don't conform with that planned development district, we will not issue the building permit.
Thank you.
Still open to public comment.
Good evening at this point. I'm Dr. Justin Hankey. I live at 1322 Bentgrass Drive. I want to speak on a couple of different standpoints. First of all, I want to make sure that zoning administrator's presenting this in a non-biased manner to you guys. We have a little bit of concerns for that at this point. There are currently six physicians in this neighborhood. I want to speak on their behalf, because five of them couldn't make it due to working restrictions. Of them, Dr. Larry Burnett, a primary care doctor, Dr. Britton Zuccarelli, a pediatric neurologist, Dr. TJ Rump, a trauma-trained orthopedic surgeon, Dr. Nathan Bambera, an anesthesiologist, Dr. Chris Woods, a GI gastroenterologist, and myself, a critical care specialist. All of us are against this rezoning, because we do feel like it's splitting lots, and I know there's different interpretations of that. Of the five of us excluding Dr. Larry Burnett, none of us are from here. None of us have family here. We all have young children. We chose to come and serve this community, a lot due to this neighborhood and the promises we were presented. All of us, straight out of training, will probably practice here up to 30 years. Rezoning this in this manner and changing what we were promised repeatedly by this developer and when we bought these homes, is not going to encourage physician retention of the ones I listed. In addition, there are two neurosurgeons and a cardiothoracic surgeon we're currently recruiting with young families looking at this neighborhood. A city that doesn't have our best interests in mind is not going to encourage the recruitment of those physicians. Barring that, I also want to speak from the standpoint of a golfer. This is a great municipal golf course, one of the best I've seen in any city I've been in. It needs to be protected. I don't feel like it makes quite a bit of sense to put dense housing like this literally in the middle of the golf course. And I do have the same concerns you had about that access road. When it's wet and muddy, I debate if we can drive a golf cart through that sometimes. A lot of the golfing community that I've spoken to are not in favor of this. I know that. Mike and Keith, the course pros, also are against this. I do feel like we need to have a lot of concern about the golf course. Once this happens, there's no going back on it. It needs to be protected. It's a concern of a lot of people here, and a lot of golfers I've talked to. I don't feel like a lot of the golf community knows about this. If they did, they'd probably be here right now. It should be presented a little further to that community, so they know what's happening. A lot of people are invested in that course and playing there. Back to the standpoint of the neighborhood, we have extremely young children there. There are probably nearly 30 kids under the age of 10. We are concerned about the traffic. I know that's open to interpretation, what is too much traffic? But I do want to point out that we were promised repeatedly that we were sticking to the original zoning. It's a great concern if this was to change on us. And I think you guys have presented concerns as well about the initial presentation. There are a lot of details lacking. I don't know if this is going to be consistent, as the current covenant has not been followed by this developer. We have concerns that any future plans would be followed as well. It's not that we're against a PDD, we just want to keep it at 18 lots with what we were presented. That being said, I'll let the next person speak. I appreciate the time. If there are any questions?
It would be helpful to staff, and if Mr. Luckman or someone with the group could identify what parts of the covenants are not being complied with.
I agree with your statement, and that will take time, as a lot of details were just given to us recently, when we were asked for them before. We can definitely go through and point all those out to you if we're given time to do so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
My name's Don Went, and I live at 1401 Bentgrass Drive. I also am concerned about the traffic. I know there's been talk about that the, we have other developments in the area that have single inlets and outlets. They are nowhere near the, what are, I shouldn't say nowhere near, they are not the same as what this development is. And when you look at at least 10 extra trips per household, that's a concern of ours. The other is, it's been presented here that this is supposed to be a 55 and up targeted development. Where's the assurance that that's what it'll be? It's also been presented that these were 1,500 to 2,400 square feet. Plans that we were presented are 1,200 square feet. That was presented to us from asking to get information on what this development is. So is it 1,200? Is it 1,500 minimum? What is that? I would just ask that if you are inclined to approve this, which I hope that you do not, but if you're inclined to approve this, I think that we should make sure that the PDD includes the restrictions as the developer is trying to present to you. Right now, I don't see any of those restrictions in the PDD. And is this a little premature to approve the replot, if you will, or the splitting of the lots without having all that information in the PDD? Shouldn't we have all the restrictions laid out of what's in the PDD instead of approving this and then later developing those restrictions? As far as the home seen in the video, those are all three-car garages. The plans that we were presented are two-bedroom, two-car garage. The other is, there is no active HOA that we're aware of. If there is an HOA in our area, then no homeowners that have houses in that area are a member of the HOA. And as far as the design review committee, the same goes for that. If there is a design review committee, then it's consistent of one member that we're aware of, and that's the builder. So if you are the gatekeeper and you are the design review committee, what is to keep you to stay in line with the restricted governments and covenants? And the way that it's written right now, the homeowners do not have any information with the government. And the way that it's written right now, the homeowners do not have any enforcement rights or any way to enforce the covenants, because it is based on the homeowners, excuse me, the landowners. Each, each lot, it has a vote. Well, currently, with this being underdeveloped, the developer has the controlling votes. So there really is no homeowners association and/or design review, and I do not anticipate that changing, especially if you split the lots from, you know, 18 to 36. And I don't think anyone in the area is against a townhome, a patio home. What we're against is splitting the lots from 36, or 18 to 36. I, I think that's our main concern is, that this type of housing and/or splitting of the lots was not intended to be when everyone purchased the properties. And that is what we were told by the developer, here's the plot, here's the plan for phase one, two, and three, and this is a deviation from that, and that's not fair to us. Thank you.
May I ask, are you, sir?
Yes.
So do you pay a HOA fee?
We do not.
Okay.
No, there is no active HOA of any of the homeowners that have homes that are built in that area. And I don't anticipate that to be a case, meaning that to have a true homeowners association where you have a board and where you have, you know, members of the board that review and can deny any new homes, new, you know, I'm sorry, my mind's a blank.
Like, if you wanted to change your paint color, you don't have to go through anyone?
Sure do not.
So how are current violations of HOA handled?
They are not.
Be my, okay.
There is, again, there's no enforcement whatsoever of the HOA, no members of an HOA, again, of homeowners that, that have houses on there. Now, if there is a homeowners association, it's secret to us. And, again, the design review committee that's stated in the covenant does not exist of any members from any homeowner in that area that owns a home. If there is a design review committee, like I said earlier, it has to consist of probably one person, which is the developer. If not, it's secret to us on who's on the design review committee. We have never been asked, nor have we ever been presented, any plans of homes, any covenant restrictions that may be violated or anything to anyone is, I assume that's correct, to everybody else that's here. So to hide behind-
You're saying there are no covenants, then?
Well, I'm saying there's covenants, but there's no enforcement of the covenants, because there's no homeowners association, nor is there a design review committee. And what is, is the assurance that that will happen in this phase three? I don't think there's any. So Mr. Shepherd can come up here and tell you all day long about what his plans are, but there's no enforcement now. So what leads us to believe that there will be for this specific area that is different and unique to Salina? So I think, if you don't deny this, I think you really need to consider that if this is going to be a unique development to Salina, that we then set the precedent that the builder has to present the restricted covenants, or covenants for a PDD, and then the city has to enforce them. Because it's easy to say, well, this is better for the homeowners, because it's a PDD and more restrictive. But right now, where are the restrictions? There aren't any. So if you approve this PDD, there's no restrictions that I'm aware of for this area.
Well, let me correct you that if there's a PVD, we make the restrictions, okay? If we want all marble fronts of the, of the buildings, that's what will be.
So what is your desire, and what is your thoughts of what the restrictions will be for this PDD?
I don't know enough about, you know, like you say, your plans say 1,200, his say 1,500. I don't have enough information to specify what-
But we can, I think we can put that in, the way I understand it, we can put a minimum square foot, and then also we can guarantee that it, or guarantee we can put in there that it needs to look like the exterior of the existing homes in the southern part.
So would the existing homeowners have any input into that?
Yes, like at right now.
That's why we're having this hearing, so that we can hear what the desires or concerns are.
Then that's what I'm saying, aren't we getting the cart before the horse? Shouldn't we develop those first to be part of the PDD before the PDD is approved or recommended?
That's what we're trying to do.
Well, we have not had adequate time to do that. We were not, we were not aware of any of this until in the very recent history, and a lot of documents we just received in the last week. So we would love the opportunity for homeowners to meet and to present to you what we believe that if you are to approve a PDD, what those, what we would like to see in those covenants and restrictions. So I would ask you to very least postpone this, and, and then allow the process to, to continue as what it was originally intended to do, and that's to, to protect the integrity of what a PDD is supposed to be. And I understand that in R1, less restrictions, and Mr. Shepherd can put a lot different home up there than, than if he has a PDD, but let's do the PDD right. That's all I ask.
That's the only way we could do it, to do it right. And put in whatever restrictions the city of Salina wants, which is you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions?
I just want to clarify, so that everyone in the room hears it at the same time, that the, under the covenants, the minimum home size is 1,200 square feet.
So I would ask-
So even if you imposed a requirement that said the minimum patio home size is 1,500 square feet, you would actually be stricter than the existing covenants.
So I guess that's what go to a little bit earlier is, is who's really the developer here? Who's really the person that is trying to get the planning commission to approve this? Is it Mr. Andrews, or is it the builder? Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Bill Shepherd, 430 Grayson. I want to address, there seems to be a lot of concern about the homeowners association. We do have a set of covenants. We don't have an active homeowners association, that's my fault, and I'll tell you a couple of reasons why. If you read through the covenants, the responsibilities of the homeowners association are very minimal at this, at this, but it's maintaining the islands, building the islands, the signs, the expenses. The homeowners association, early on, had no money. I decided to pay for all that out of my own pocket, and at the point that I was done with that, and it's very near that, and I've talked to a couple of these residents about that, that we'll start this, and we'll appoint anywhere from three to seven members to take care of that. Now, the designer review committee, I rely really heavily on Warren Edgar. Everything I've got goes through him. Everybody that has submitted something to me, whether it's a builder or the homeowner, I've approved or, or made amendments to. Most of the time, there's just not too many changes. So, again, it's never been active. The, the components, it would be maintaining the islands. I've, again, I've done all that. I've spent almost $70,000 between rocks, landscaping dirt, and maintaining things over the last 70 years. And so this, it will be active, it'll be active this year. I've talked to Mike Montoya about it, and we'll get that address. And then we'll appoint members, and they can take control over that, so. Thank you.
Shouldn't members be elected?
Actually, the first members, according to the covenants, are appointed, and then annually, they're elected by the group, so.
Sorry to have to speak again. The lack of an HOA is not his fault, it's his choice. All of us are pro for having an HOA. None of us have a problem with paying fees. When the covenant has been not followed, we've all had concerns. We have not had any input with him. We are open to always paying fees to it. That was what was presented to the majority of us when we built in there and bought these lots, that it was already going, we were already going to have fees, we've never had a problem with that. If there are back charges that we need to make up for, please give them to us. We're open to it.
Could I have an example of the covenants that, just for my own point of reference, like, that were violated, that there wasn't action on?
Every home is supposed to have a basement. A home was built without a basement. The current lots are supposed to be maintained. Just west of mine, there is a enormously large pile of dirt from a previous home being built that is overgrown with weeds, that has foxes and snakes coming out of it right where my kids play. We've never had any input. All of us want it, all of us are open to it. Just like you said, we're not against everything being presented today. We understand the benefits of a PDD, but we want to be involved and be informed properly, and then have an open discussion and dialogue, which I don't feel like that's appropriate at this time, given we received some documents literally in the last 48 hours. And we've also presented different floor plans that were not consistent with what was presented to us initially, so there, there's too much flux, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Chris Carlson, 1217 Bentgrass, the house without the basement. We're, we're the family that he's targeting. We came to Salina, and we wanted a retirement home. We knew our kids weren't coming home, and this is going to be our forever home. It's something that we couldn't find, which was, we were not looking for dense housing. We've never lived in that type of house. It's all over Salina. You can find duplexes with double-car garages everywhere you go. What you can't find is nice square footage with a little bit of yard, a triple-car garage, which, being on a golf course, of course, we have a golf cart, so I have concerns about traffic. And the one thing I'm going to read, I'm sorry, I was freezing in here, so my voice is, is when we were presented the feeling of openness and park-like atmosphere, you do this and you lose that. That's not what we bought into. We bought into an area that is comfortable between homes. It's a great neighborhood. As you can see, we've all banded together without an HOA, and the square footage he brought up at 1,200, it does say no basements. It does say no storage buildings, that was another thing that someone has. So we're ready to go. We want to do this and do it right. We just feel that the vote today is the cart, you know, before the horse. Let's get the PDD done and all those restrictions straight out, then look at whether you need to split lots or not, because the majority of the neighborhood does, does not want those lots split. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, my name is Tim Henry, and I'm at 1333 Bentgrass Drive. I have two observations to share. One senses public record. Think about the price that's being suggested these homes are going to sell for, and the square footage, and test that for reasonableness on a 50-foot lot. The other question I would have for you, and I know it's not a requirement, because we've tested this already, the property taxes on the development with the developer on a lot of the lots haven't been paid. So it just seems a little bit strange that we're spending time and effort entertaining this motion at the same time that the fees to support the city are in arrears. I know it's not a requirement, it just doesn't seem like the right course of action, even if it's not a requirement. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Anyone else?
Just a quick question. Have the, have the taxes been-
Would you mind coming up to the podium, please? Just, it's a-
Okay. Do it official. Chris Carlson, 1217. Have those taxes on the land that we are talking about been paid yet?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. And my understanding, it is per the state that you cannot go forward with anything until those taxes are paid?
That'd be a question for our attorney or for staff?
What I have indicated, which is factually correct, that under state law, Mr. Shepherd cannot record a plat or a replat of that property unless all taxes are paid and current. So if we went through this exercise, and somehow the planned development district was approved, and the replat was approved, Mr. Shepherd would be stuck, unable to record a plat if the taxes were not paid. And then he couldn't develop anything until such time as he saw fit to pay the taxes.
Again, cart before the horse. Thank you.
I'm sorry, you'll have to, it's a formality, you have to come up. It's, we're on television, there's a microphone, it's, again, I apologize, but it's the way they want it.
Wouldn't we hope that these taxes are paid on time to begin with? I mean, that shows consistency with the builder and his ability to complete a job, do a job that we're talking about right now. That raises a lot of concern.
Anyone else from the public?
Mark Boland, 1338 Bentgrass, building a house in Grand Prairie right now. Have a lot of concerns, but one of them is, you mentioned the current PDDs in Highland Hamlet, River Trail, Hidden Meadows, Golden Eagle Number Five, River Run. I have just one question. When those developments were developed, did they, and I may be going the wrong way on this, but did they have PDDs at the beginning of their developments?
From the outset, yes.
And this, Grand Prairie, did not have a PDD at the beginning of their development. I would like you to consider that. All the PDDs that are currently in the city of Salina, it sounds like, were ones that started when that development started. Grand Prairie was started without a PDD. I'll let you think about that.
You've got to understand, we're not talking about the rest of the development. We're only talking about the 18 or 36 lots. We have no control over the rest.
I, I understand that, sir, yes, and I, and I agree. But you're opening up a new can of worms, allowing a development to start developing, and then the developer down the road, he decides he wants to do a PDD. And I think we're opening a, a new can of worms, we're shaking the test tube.
But that's why we have public hearings, to get public input.
Right. Yes, and I agree. Thank you for your time.
We appreciate your input. Anyone else from the public? I'd like to state that I appreciate all of you taking your time to come out and express your opinion and your concerns, and obviously, it's a great neighborhood. I mean, you guys have all gotten together and voiced your concerns. I guess that's it for public comments.
One thing is, I think that it makes this a little more challenging, is the fact that we are statutorily required to provide notice of the hearing to all owners of property within 200 feet of the request area, and unfortunately, that resulted in two property owners being notified by letter of this hearing, and that was the Salina Municipal Golf Course and the Cornerstone Development, which is Bill Shepherd. So one of the challenges with this is that it appears that we are going to have to somehow expand our notification area so that we can get more information out to people outside the statutory notice area. And some of the, the things that I have taken notes on is that I think it would, it would be beneficial for the applicant, for the interested property owners, and for the planning commission, is if we have shown you representative floor plans and representative elevation drawings of what the applicant says he's wanting to do, but if we narrowed that down into a specific floor plan or plans, and specific, this is the elevation of the types of dwellings that I want to build, and we are able to develop a appropriate notification list, then if we were to postpone the hearing on this to either the first or second meeting in October, then that would allow us to have a specific package put together that says, this is specifically from a floor plan footprint, from an elevation, from materials of what is being proposed. One of the, and it's a lesson for Mr. Shepherd to learn, but one of the reasons that Highland Meadows, Hamlet, River Run, Golden Eagle, those started out as planned development districts from- those started out as planned development districts from the outset is that when the developer controls 100% of the development before it's going to be developed, you get all the rules, all the multifamily areas, all those identified upfront. And then everyone who buys a lot goes in knowing what to expect. In this case, Mr. Baffa correctly points out that Mr. Shepherd cannot change anything about this subdivision that requires a change to the zoning rules without a public hearing and public input. And that's why we're here today. But it's pretty clear that our notice area, which was primarily to the Salina Municipal Golf Course and to Mr. Shepherd's Cornerstone Development, and the rest of the notice was by posting a sign. So it seems to us that we need to narrow things down into a specific development proposal that we can then get into the hands of the interested homeowners so they can respond to it, so they know specifically they're speaking in generalities about what they don't want or don't like. But we owe it to them to give them something specific so then they can tell us specifically what they don't like.
Yes, and could you, in that notice, could you include all of the information that you gave us in our packet?
We can try to do that. Because we did think that we tried to flesh out what the planned development district would consist of. As I said, we have lots of experience with planned development districts in Salina. It's not a foreign concept, and it's something that has worked well. But as the last speaker pointed out, most of the times when we do a planned development district, we're starting with a blank canvas and we're establishing all the ground rules from day one. This is a change to an already established subdivision. And that's why we're here discussing it. But I would be... We'd want to have some input from Mr. Shepherd, but I think we're going to have to package something together to say, these are, this is the specific floor plan or plans. These are the specific elevations and materials. And get that into the hands of the interested parties that are here today so that everybody is armed with the same information. Because clearly, that's not the case. Everyone here today has got a different level of information. And so the best thing would be for everyone to get the same information at the same time. And so we're going to have to expand our... I mean, a comment was made that golf course personnel were opposed to this. I personally talked to the golf course superintendent and the director of Parks and Recreation, and they didn't have any concern about the development that was being proposed. So those are kind of things that'll have to be ironed out for you. But we would need to hear from Mr. Shepherd whether he thinks that we can pull together specific proposals to distribute out either for the first meeting in October or the second meeting in October, which would be either the 1st of October or the 15th of October.
I think, and I'm not in a hurry, so I think the 15th is fine.
Okay. So what we'll try to do is put together a package of all the things. We'll specify square footages. We'll specify building materials and say, this is the specific proposal. And that way, all the interested parties can respond to the same proposal and then tell you and tell Mr. Shepherd and what specifically they find objectionable about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Come on up.
My name's Chuck Gary. I live at 1318 Bentgrass. I did talk to Mike Harvay with the municipal golf course twice. First time I talked to him, he didn't have a clue. I just point-blank asked him. I says, "You know what's going on up here?" He just kind of said, "No." And I kind of explained it to him, to what was being proposed. And he says, "Well, I'll talk to my boss." So then about two or three days later, I go up there again, and I mentioned it to him again, and he says, "When's that meeting?" And I told him. He says, "Yeah." He says, "I talked to my boss, and we're going to be up there to that meeting, which is today." But he was aware of what's going on after I told him. So he was in the dark, too. So I don't know why they didn't show up today, but I think that they are concerned, but I don't know why they aren't here today.
Are they concerned about having houses built at all? Or are they concerned about these houses? Because...
I think they're more concerned about the numbers that are going up there in that little thing.
Because if houses get built there on existing lots, there's still going to be golf balls hit into people's yards.
Well, I think he's more concerned, like we are, about the integrity of the area and having that many people inside the golf course area. I mean, you put 36 homes up in there and that many people in that small of an area, they're going to be flooding out onto the course, not playing golf. Think about that. How, the area's so small, they're going to be able to go out in the street and play. They're going to have to go out in their backyards, which is the golf course. And I says, "Well, Mike," I said, "how are you going to police that? The kids are going to be out there. Their grandkids are going to be out there playing on the golf course, riding their bicycles, playing baseball. They might even be playing golf out there on the greens. What are the greens are going to look like?" And he says, "Well, we'll police that." They don't police that golf course now. They don't have to be out there riding on a cart, watching what's going on. I live right on the golf course. I watch it. I've called them. They don't police it. So you throw 36 more houses up there, and the numbers, you're asking for trouble. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Well, one of the options that we gave you was to... Planning Commission could recommend consideration of this application be postponed to allow the applicant or staff to provide additional information or to allow major revisions to be made to the applicant's development concept. So unless commissioners have specific revisions that they want to make to the, suggest to the concept, then the additional information we would try to pull together. We debated, the packet was thick enough as it is. We debated long and hard about whether we should include the covenants in the packet, which are quite lengthy, and we still don't think that's a good idea. But we can try to make an attachment that will highlight the covenants as they relate to this proposed development. But as it stands, it seems to me that getting a specific floor plan, specific architectural elevations that can be seen by everyone and responded to is the place to start so that everyone doesn't feel like they're not getting the information they need to understand what Mr. Shepherd's proposing.
Can we also add that those are dimensioned floor plans?
Yes.
Was there somebody else in the public that needed to speak? Okay. Just double-checking.
So the date of October 15th was suggested as a continuation date. And so, again, we will have to... We'll have to generate... Staff will have to generate a notification list to try to get... We have the information of the people that spoke here, but we'll try to get a list of every property owner that's not Cornerstone Development in the subdivision and get everyone the same information so that they can respond to it the same way. So it appears that the best course of action at this point would be to postpone consideration of these applications, both the planned development district and the replat to the October 15th meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Who was the second on that? So the motion that was approved and seconded was to postpone the hearing on this till October 15th.
I thought 13th.
I think it's the 15th.
I think I said 13th. But, I mean, the third Tuesday of October.
That is, that is the 15th of October. So what we will do is that we will compile a mailing list of every owner in Grand Prairie. And once we have the information from Mr. Shepherd, we will mail it to every property owner in Grand Prairie so that they receive it at the same time and have the same information so that they can respond to a specific proposal.
I have one question. Will that include the, these proposed covenants stuff? That's, I mean, that's the whole package? Or is this just plans?
What...
Sorry.
The... Since the... The current covenants do not require or have a mechanism for providing the shared yard maintenance and all those things, we will try to work with Mr. Shepherd and his counsel to try to get a draft of the covenants that would apply specifically to this area so that we can share those. I have tried. I have run copies of the existing covenants and furnished them to some of the owners. If that's important, I can make a copy of the covenants in their entirety, and we can mail those covenants out to every single owner in the subdivision if they feel like they don't have them. Okay.
I have another question. Can you explain the process going forward from here so that I understand it? I understand that Mr. Shepherd will put together the articles that you suggested, but then what happens after that? You know, they're mailed to us. We look at it. Then on October 15th, can you give me an idea of what happens on October 15th?
We'll have exact replay of what we had today except for the... Hopefully, the people that come and appear and speak can be specific about what they find objectionable or what they believe that Mr. Shepherd's doing violates the existing covenants.
So is that, we talked earlier about wanting to hear what we would like to see, not saying that we can necessarily change the direction, but is there a point where we will have input of what we think some of those restrictions are, be... Or is that only from the applicant?
What we're going to try to do is get stuff from Mr. Shepherd that is so specific that it has floor plans that are dimensioned, square footages, elevations of proposed dwellings that will indicate what the building materials are. And if everyone receives those and they say that the front building materials aren't... These aren't up to the rest of this subdivision, or the square footages aren't big enough, or then you can come to the hearing and say, "These are not, we think the bar is too low. These are still not acceptable." If this is going to happen, we would want to see A, B, and C.
So what you're saying, then, is we will have the right to review that and bring our comments with those. Is there the right for us to suggest additions?
Yes.
And we will do it at that time? October 15th?
Yes, or you can do it in advance of the meeting. If you meet and you have some meeting in the minds and you want to present something, and it's provided in writing to the commissioners and to Mr. Shepherd, and everybody else can see it. So Mr. Luckman furnished me with a letter in representation of the homeowners in advance of the meeting, and I made copies of it to make sure the planning commissioners had all received and read that. And anything that we receive from anybody, we will make sure that it's copied and incorporated into the packet.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess in the interest of compromising, would you all consider patio homes even, maybe even less dense, if that's the problem? I mean, you know, but still consider...
That was presented to us initially, was townhouse patio homes in 18 lots. We have no problem with that.
Oh, that the 18 lots would all be patio homes?
That was the initial.
Where'd you go for 24?
Once we're going to change, yeah. We're not asking for change. They are. And just like you said, we've before had neighborhoods that started out as PDDs. I know that's the big concern is why the change, I suppose. What's the need?
I think, from my perspective, it's an environmental... I do like the concept of patio homes. And I actually just spent four nights in one in Westminster, Colorado. My mother-in-law lives in one. And they are very quiet. It's upscale where she is. They're... I could see that it would be a lot less traffic than if you had 18 young family homes, actually. It's, yeah. Anyway, I do like the concept and the idea of less yardage to mow and water from an environmental standpoint, so... But I also appreciate you expecting one thing when you purchased your house. And so anyway, just, yeah, like I said, in the interest of compromise, you know, would you consider 24 homes instead of 36? Or, you know... But if 18, I mean, you just need to express what you can live with.
I think we all understand the need for this type of housing. There's also North Cedar Ridge, as well as the area west of our addition where that type of housing came over. It just seems strange to change it later on as this has not been done in any community in Salina.
Thank you.
On to further business.
The next item we have for you is legislative in nature, and that...
Thank you.
Could everyone wait just for a moment? I apologize for, Mr. Chairman, for interjecting.
Please do.
My name is Greg Bengson with Clark Meislinville, legal counsel for the city. The reason I was so abruptly interjected myself, and I apologize, I think certainly the motion was appropriate, Dean, but am I correct that the dean, that the motion did not formally continue the public hearing until the... There was reference to postponing consideration, but I was, my only reason for jumping in was that I wanted to be sure that everyone was here. And I expect that might have been something that was running through Mr. Luckman's mind as to, we want to preserve this proceeding as a continuum of a public hearing so as not to trigger a wholesale re-notification. I know there's a re-notification aspect of this, and I'm sorry to have to staff this. I was just trying to pay attention as to, brother Dean, are we anticipating that we were...
We are anticipating that we are continuing...
Anticipating a new notice proceeding or relying on...
Postponing consideration and continuing the public hearing to October 15th.
That was my only point, was continuing, making sure that it was on the record that that proceeding will be a continuation of this public hearing and not require all-new legal notifications. So, apologize for jumping in, but that was my point.
Apologies needed. Thanks for the clarification. Appreciate it.
So would you like them to restate the motion?
Do you modify that motion in here?
Yeah, I think just to get it into the record if the maker of the motion, Mr. Baffa, would like to modify it to make sure that... would like to modify it to make sure that it, it is, that you are recommending that consideration of this application be postponed, and the public hearing be continued to the October 15th meeting.
So moved.
And we had Mr. Olson seconding that, so if we could get a, a vote on the motion as restated to postpone consideration and to continue the public hearing to your October 15th meeting?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Unfortunately, we are.
Greg, go.
Thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
Greg, I wish you would have been here to hear their lawyer talk.
Well, if I may, just a quick comment. I heard his comments. I was working on another matter upstairs, expected that it was not necessary. Certainly, Mr. Andrew, I think, handled very well any of the legal aspects, as you went through the discussion. The other thing I considered mentioning was, I certainly heard Mr. Luckman's comments. I certainly have high regard for his opinion. Mr. Montoya, on the applicant's side of the case, I certainly have great respect for Mr. Montoya's opinion. I would expect, if it's helpful for you, though, I know that there were some legal concepts being kicked around as to the covenants, their relevance, their application, just what the interplay might be between the private and the covenants, and the PDD covenants, and I would expect, at Mr. Andrew's direction, that there might be some room for conversation among council to even try to clarify that a little bit thoroughly by that time.
It might even be helpful if we could, whether it's a, a cover memo, or just a brief summary of the law, to distinguish between private real estate covenants and what the city's role is in those, because I do think there's even confusion amongst the public about, and I can see that in the conversation, about a PDD and the level of protection it, it brings, but something that might be guidance both for the planning commission and be able to distribute to the homeowners to, to articulate in writing our, our position on that.
I figured you probably had enough lawyers in the room for today.
I'm sorry. Just, just so I know whether I'm standing on firm ground or not, my understanding is that those covenants are basically kind of a civil matter between the homeowners and the HOA, and that as the city, we are pretty much hands-off unless those violations encroach on, on city code, or...
Common areas?
Is that correct? Or am I being too simpli, simplifying you too much?
Well, if it's, if it's helpful, I'll try to address that briefly, and will certainly ask Mr. Andrew to interrupt or wave his hands if he thinks I have misspoken in some way. They are certainly different, conceptually, and from an enforceability standpoint. The private covenants are, as I'm sure you understand, put in place generally by the owner at the outset of a development, and address whatever private restrictions they might wish to impose on the development. Reference was made to the homeowners' association, and generally, it would not only be a homeowners' association that could enforce those, any owner individually would have standing to seek to enforce those covenants. The one party that we know, unless the city is a party, or has undertaken an enforcement responsibility, as Mr. Andrew described, I don't, it's, it's my understanding, we wouldn't even have standing to go up to the third floor and attempt to enforce those, in that they are private covenants. You have the transition to these PDD covenants, which might look much the same, but they are inherently matters of interest to the city, and you, and your roles, the city commission in its role, and certainly, if you're in the area where the, where, where we're speaking of the PDD covenants, then certainly, and that will generally, I mean, the enforcement activity will, in that context, will normally occur at the building permit stage. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Dean, that's where, you know, in the PDD context, we don't have to go upstairs to generally enforce requirements. That's dealt with.
The PDD requirements are incorporated into an ordinance, and we would enforce anything that's in an ordinance, and so...
So they're very, I'm sorry.
That, that is the, that is the distinction between, which we didn't do a very good job of articulating, between a plan development district and covenants, is that if you have requirements that you wanna see incorporated, they're put into an ordinance, and the ordinance is enforceable by the city. And so, that's what we try to do in a plan development district, is any elements that the planning or city commission wants to make sure get carried out, those are included in the ordinance that zones the property, and then that is enforceable by the city.
But actually, the biggest problem here is the fault of the homeowners. You know, let the buyer beware. They should have investigated what the covenants are, what the homeowner's fees are, how they're enforceable. You know, what if the developer says, "All right, now the homeowner's fee's gonna be $1,000 a month for each house."
Sometimes the Realtors aren't always the best at disclosing that information, though.
The only thing I might add, and I'm sorry to, to interrupt again, I'm happy to try to respond to your specific legal questions. I think any, what would be characterized as discussion of the merits of the matter, we would not want to have any further discussion with us having, the motion having been made, and, and you all having moved on to whatever is next on your agenda, despite my interruption. So, I'm the one, I realize I'm the one that brought it up, and I'm sorry for my timing, but I think those are all very good points and discussion that is yet to be had with everybody in the public hearing context. So, the only thing I, other thing I would add quickly, on the legal side, in relation to, there is a point to be made, and I think this is what I would expect, that Mr. Andrew and Mr. Luckman and Mr. Montoya and I might have reason to discuss a little bit. Is it fair to say, Mr. Andrew, that there is relationship between the private covenants and the factors? When you're talking about a zoning change, as it relates to valuations, as it relates to current conditions, it's not just a black and white, yes, we have to enforcement, enforce them, or no, we can't enforce them. They are there, and I think they are potentially a factor, to be given whatever weight you believe they should be given, as it relates to the city's function in this rezoning application. So, that's what I would expect to explore with Mr. Luckman and Mr. Montoya and Mr. Andrew.
As the, one of the factors that's to be considered by any planning commission is the character of the neighborhood, and the impact on the character of the neighborhood, and sometimes, there's a relationship between the covenants and the character. So, that's what we'd wanna explore further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we've finally reached a point where we have a, a draft, and it's an odd situation where it's a draft that we're not asking you to vote on or make a recommendation on, other than you think that it's an adequate substitute, but what we've, we've tried to point out is that we have a section in the zoning ordinance that deals with aesthetic standards for small cell facilities in the public right-of-way, and the approach that we've tried to take is to take that out of the zoning ordinance and put it into the ordinance that deals with regulating what's in the public right-of-way, and so what we've done is prepare a draft that is a substitution for what we have, and I think, John, the, the main thing that we wanted to focus on is, if you wanna, it's about on page six, maybe, dealing with intern, not that, on the, the draft. So, keep scrolling. I think it's after, it's after this section. Right, right here. We were trying to focus in our discussions about accessory equipment, and one of the things that we discussed was that it's been expressed to me that with the merger between Kansas City Power and Light and West Star, that they're not as inclined to allow for the equipment boxes to be mounted on the poles, and so, if you wanna keep going, John, to the section on color, if you could stop right there. So one of the things we discussed at several meetings had to do with the, what the color would be for any ground-mounted equipment boxes, or for, or the canisters themselves. So this proposes that unless the placement is a location where a specific streetscape color scheme has been established for light poles, that would be, for example, downtown, where we have the powder-coated black light poles and the black coat, power-coated street furniture. The wireless support structure and all associated external accessory equipment shall be painted to match using a flat-go-away green color approved by the city, which minimizes glare and visibility. Paint should be powder-coated or incorporated in the pole material. So, we had discussions back and forth about whether we should have language about painted to match the existing pole, or that type of thing, but what we thought we heard was a preference towards a camouflage, or this kind of neutral camouflage green color, and we, we had some photographs of that, I think, but is, the main thing we wanted to check is whether that captured a consensus of the commission, that rather than saying that the equipment boxes had to match whatever the pole was that we specify, that it would be that camouflage green color.
May I ask, do you know, is there one of those on Marymount in front of the cemetery?
Yes, there is.
It, it was camouflaged. I've gone by there several times, and I finally saw it, and I thought, "That's the color it should be."
That was, that was, that one was reviewed and approved by the planning commission, because that was a, a new installation. What we're proposing now, by taking it out of the zoning ordinance, is that those, we would use this to specify the ground rules, but all, all approvals would be administrative, so you would never have to have a public hearing again on one of those. But if you, if you think that we have captured the elements that you wanted to see addressed in that, the only, only action that's really required by you would be to make a recommendation that Section 4270 of the zoning ordinance be repealed and replaced by new aesthetic standards, that would become part of Chapter 35, and then you'd never have to see this Because by putting it in Chapter 35, that's the right-of-way section, and that would be administered, along with our other right-of-way things, by Public Works, so...
So can I just say, "I so move" what you just said?
So you would be willing to recommend to the city commission that our current zoning ordinance provisions be repealed and replaced by these substitute standards?
Yes.
Motion's in seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
That means you'll never see wireless facilities, text amendment on your, for right-of-way again.
That would be amazing.
And we're done with signs.
And you're just about, yes, I think we have that ironed out with the city councils as well, so if we could not keep putting that on your agenda, and not keep putting signs on your agenda, we'd be in pretty good shape. So, we do not have any preliminary, well, we have no administrative items on your agenda, and we know, have no preliminary discussion items to discuss at this time. We will meet on the 17th, and we will have our annual business meeting on the 17th. We're also gonna try to schedule a steady session for our annual orientation and, and board training on the 17th. We're trying to do that consistently with all the city planning boards during the month of September, in conjunction with our annual meetings, so we'll be, you'll be getting information on that, but we are likely to have a steady session ahead of the regular meeting on the 17th. And then we're looking at, on that second meeting in October the 15th, looking at the, that as our annual landscape awards, if we can come up with some nominees, so...
Foley tractor.
I think that one, it's kinda out there, but it did, they did do everything they said they were gonna do.
And it looks good.
Okay, so we'll, we'll jot that one down. As far as other, other business, Mr. Baffa had me make some copies of something that he was handed out and put at your place about using native plants and plantings, and, and the benefits of that, and I will let him make any other summary comments about that, but it's a two-page handout there that we had on native plants, that he wanted to bring to the commission's attention.
Basically what the city... And something that I, I think we, we should be doing, too. Now, you know, and we have our preferred tree list, which is low-water-use plants, but native plants are much better for wildlife, because native plants evolved with native animals all at the same time, and you bring in something from Europe, a perfect example is, you bring in a pest from outside, you know, like Asian long-ord beetle, Limerle dash bor, bull weevil, you name it, you know, and you bring something in, they don't have natural predators to control their populations, and they explode, so that's why I like natives.
Would you like us to share this with the Parks Department and the city forester as well? Cause that's, I see part of this is not just what's happening on private property, but also what's happening in the park system?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay.
And then in that vein, too, then, that urban planner at K-State, gave you her card, basically doing the same stuff.
The one thing we have, and we actually, might, I have it on my notes, to try to get lined up with the time we do our landscape awards, is that one of the things we're working on is taking information about native plants that we have from the arboretum in Heston and K-State, and cross-checking that against our recommended tree and plant, zero-scape plant list, and if we find native plants that aren't on our recommended list, then we're gonna try to bring back a revised recommended list for you to review, to make sure we're not inadvertently excluding native plants that could be beneficial.
Yeah, I, I think it might be easier just to have water-wise... Yeah, I think it might be easier just to have water-wise plants and native plant, or wildlife-friendly plants.
Okay.
Two different things, and I think it would be easier. There might be duplicates on it.
Okay. So we'll, we'll try to get that so it lines up with the landscape awards, but that, that may be enough fun for one evening, so we'll, we don't have anything else to bring forward to you, except that we will meet on the 17th, and try to remember everything that's on there, but one, one thing we do have on there is a, there, you looked at the development that Mr. Roger Bakhtah is trying to do at the end of Coach Light Lane, and there's a, I haven't quite figured out the relative status, but it's also Mr. Bakhtah who's doing the motels there, and the motels are addressed off South Ninth. I tried to encourage them to consider readdressing that off the side street because for emergency response and other things, you could drive by on South Ninth and never even see them. So he said he was very open to that, but that what he would really like to see is that Coach Light Lane would be changed to Bakhtah Court. So a street name change has to go before the planning commission for your recommendations, so we're going to present a report to you on considering changing the name of that street, so.
Wouldn't Baffa Court be similar enough?
We want to make sure that, just to make sure that it's, it's not, it doesn't sound alike or is, is the same as any other street name in the city, and so we don't, we don't believe it does, but we would review that, and then there's one owner up there not named Bakhtah, and so they would have a chance to weigh in on that, so.
Can we have hyphenated?
Yes. It's, it's, when you're going out to I-70 on Ninth Street, it's on the left-hand side. There's lots of trees there that hide what's going on, but it's presently addressed at like 1949 North Ninth, and that's, we have a sign there that says Coach Light Lane, and so that really shouldn't be addressed off of Ninth Street, and so he said he'd be happy to change the, the address numbers to address it off the side street, but would like that side street to be named Bakhtah Court, so.
Should we go for adjournment?
Yeah, Wally's not here to make the motion to adjourn.
Somebody to motion for adjournment, so.
It's been motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.